Okay.
I think we want to get started. All right, thirteen to.
I was just gonna say that's all it took.
Okay, guys, we're getting started. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. It's Lori Charlton. It's February 18, 2025. Welcome to the quarterly meeting of the Board of Finance. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we all please rise. Mr. Stark, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, to the members of the public who've dialed in or joined us via Zoom tonight, please know you're muted and will not be heard by board members, and there will be no live public comment until called for during the meeting. We welcome public comment on voting items, and I'll open up for comment on agenda item number seven. If you're on Zoom, you can indicate now or in any time prior to public comment via the chat function that you'd like to be heard, and please plan to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Members of the public are always encouraged to send their comments and questions in writing to the board, and you can do so via the town website by navigating to the Board of Finance page and clicking on Contact the Board. All right, we'll move right into item three, which is to review the current status of the town's pension and OPEB funds. The backup for this item is the BlackRock Quarterly Investment Report, which begins on page one. It's a posted backup online. So we have the Chair of the Pension Board, Ken Brockfeld, here to walk us through this.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Welcome, or thank you for welcoming me. I'm going to give this report basically in the same format that we've been doing for a while. Try to do it relatively briefly and then leave room for questions. I know you guys have a full meeting, so push me along if I'm taking up too much of your time. Take a look, if you could, at the handout you guys got or the file. I guess it was attached on pages four and five to start, just to give you a reference. So this was a good, you know, this has been a good year in the pension fund return, and it's been a good year in the market, right? Everybody here is probably aware to some extent or another about the, you know, how well the equity markets have done, which is the predominant portion of our allocations. So year-to-date, incidentally, the report I'm showing you is end of December, so it's the end of the year was nine percent, I believe, 9.13%. It slipped a little bit in the final quarter, down 1.06%, and for the month down 1.75%. We can go through that a little more. One thing I'm always pleased to report is that if you jump ahead quickly, you don't have to do this, but if you quickly jump ahead, I think it's to seven or eight, nine, you'll see that we are extremely tight to our allocation targets, meaning if our target is 50% of something, or 30% or 20%, you'll find that we're right on top of those numbers. So we're doing a good job, and our OCIO, our new OCIO BlackRock, who you can see their name on the bottom of these sheets, is doing a good job of making sure that we're always rebalanced back to the target allocations. It's a very common mistake for any investor when the markets move, the equity markets have such a big year, to let your allocations get out of whack without even realizing that we're keeping on top of that. Speaking of allocations, in the pension, it's 50% equities, 31% fixed income, about 11% private equity, and about 5% private real estate. And within the equities, it's a mix of domestic and international. So of that 50%, 30% is domestic, 20% is international. And within fixed income, it's also split, about 22 domestic, nine international. I've already told you that the markets were driven largely by strong equity performance. The US equity market was up like 15%, whereas the fixed income market was only up about 2%. Leave something to the end there. So that would be a top-line report on the pensions. I'll stop for a second before I move over to OPEB. See if anybody has any. Mr. Jim Walsh.
Brock on page four, the ITV, that'd be inception to date. That's always a phrase. So it says that our inception increase is 5.15%.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That seems incredibly low with the way stocks have moved in the last
Yeah, so this
20, 20 years or so. So first of all, when does inception start?
This goes back, I believe, to 1999.
So we're 26 years in.
25 years, yeah.
And our total is only 5.15%.
Annualized, right.
Why would that be?
Good, great question. If you've been at our board meetings, which I have not, or no reason you should, we've been, it's been a topic of discussion the last two meetings in general. I've only taken over his chair a couple of meetings now. I've asked BlackRock actually to come back to us with a report that breaks down long-term what the derivation of these returns has been and why they've been, and I agree with you, very disappointing. I can give you a preview of my thoughts, having been on the board for a long, you know, on and off the board for quite a while. We've had a very large allocation to international stocks and international bonds during the whole time that I've been involved, which goes back to 1999. And international, if you talk to any advisor, they're always going to tell you that there should be a good allocation to international stocks, you know, it represents the entire world portfolio, and you want to track what's going on. Having said that, international stocks have underperformed, no joke, the last one year, three year, five year, seven years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and 25 years. It's been an awful experience that nobody with a crystal ball could have necessarily projected. So that would be definitely a very big component of why the performance has lagged, you know, the headline S&amp;P 500 returns that you guys would see on TV at night. Second is up till around, hold me to it, but around 2012, 2013, we were in a lot of active funds, meaning we were paying large fees to have fancy managers pick and choose stocks for us, and they underperformed in general. And that, by the way, goes for the entire market. You know, most, I think most people now have come to understand that active funds are not able to beat their indexes. So we have, I think, the right decision, have changed over to all index ETF-style investments in the liquid areas. So our domestic stocks, international stocks, domestic bonds, international bonds, for the last seven or eight years have moved over to passive ETFs, and that is definite improvement. But I think that the active funds probably were a drag. All of this is going to come out when they give us these reports. So I'm giving you my very pretty educated guesses, and
No, so is the board considering getting out of non-US equities? Based on what you just said, or is that just your opinion?
Yeah, I want to be careful. I
Yeah, I
Why don't you let me report back next quarter on what we discussed? I mean, I have an opinion that you can sort of kind of read from the way I'm saying it. But, and then the third reason, again, to be determined as we get a report from BlackRock that goes back and looks at this more carefully, is the alternatives that we've been involved with, private equity, private real estate. And then if you want to call some of our mistakes, like Madoff, as part of your alternatives, I think they've been a drag in performance. Although, one of my criticisms of the alternatives in general is it's pretty hard to actually get a handle on that. I'm going to talk about that in a second. So those would be the three reasons I would strongly guess for the underperformance. Remember something, we have a 6.9% discount rate. That used to be much higher, right? It used to be like 8% or something. So to the extent we don't meet that rate, there's other issues on the liability side. But on the asset side, you know, we come back to you guys each year with smoothing and all that stuff to kick in money to meet the ADEC, the Actuarial Defined Employer Contribution. So there are consequences to a long-term 5.15 when the expectation is 6, 9, or higher. And we need to address it, is the answer. That's a great question.
And then I have one other question. On the, on the page that says portfolio returns per asset class and vehicle, under private.
It's on page six.
I couldn't help but see a number jump out, which is under private equity, under the Lexington Middle Market Fund, a negative return of 62.26% for the last three months, and since inception, 63.18%, which I'm presuming the inception was hopefully six months ago or something like that.
Did you compare notes with Ms. Miska over there? So, yeah, same question.
Same question.
Hold on to that for a second. I'm going to get to it.
Sure.
Okay. So there's any other questions beyond Mr. Walsh on the pension side, then I'm going to move to OPEB. Okay, so if you just, we can always come back if you have any more questions. If you flip to pages, I think it's 12 and 13. Yeah, 12 and 13 are the similar pages for OPEB. So just to go over it, the OPEB market value ended up, by the way, we were about $475 million and change in the pension fund at the end of December, and about $94,563 in the OPEB. And the OPEB performance is better. And it's better because, well, let me get to it in a second, but if you look at the numbers, the one-year is 12.1% versus 9.1%. And the fiscal year-to-date on the pension was 4.13, and it's 4.92 for the OPEB. So the OPEB has had stronger performance historically, although that, that number is starting to tighten up to the pension because what happened was the OPEB, which is the town reserving of monies for retiree health expenses. That is a recent decision by the town in the last 10 or 12 years, I guess, to, to start reserving that money. It wasn't required before then. I'm not even sure it's required now, Mary, right? But it's something we're doing.
Right. We decided to pend it.
Yeah. And so that, that is a smaller balance for that reason. But also, when we started that fund, the OPEB fund, we decided at the time, and I think I was on the board at the time, because it was at the time very small, and still is smaller, that we were going to have a much simpler portfolio without the alternatives and the private equity and so forth. So it was strictly a stock-bond portfolio with a heavier allocation to stocks. So obviously, with hindsight, that was a better choice. And as a result, the performance has been stronger across the board. As this OPEB has grown to almost 100 million, the board, before I got to the board recently, the board decided to morph the portfolio to mirror the pension portfolio. So whether it's good or bad, we'll find out, but things like alternatives and private equity and so forth are starting to come into this. And so you're going to see the returns of the two vehicles start to converge and pretty pretty much on top of each other as time goes on. Any questions about the, and what I said before is the same here. The BlackRock's done a very good job of keeping us right on top of our allocations. So we are where we're supposed to be X, we are X. We're not letting it wander away from that, which is healthy. And I'll just remind you that, you know, the J-Rib is a fiduciary board, and we take a very long-term view of this. We're, you know, we report to you on a quarterly basis, and I'm giving you these relatively short-term results. But we do also want to remember that this is a, almost a definition of a long-term investment vehicle for pensions and OPEB. And we do want to make decisions that are in the best interests of the long term and not to get too wrapped up in any quarter or even years' returns, in my opinion.
Question. When we were looking back at, I guess you were saying back to 1999, do you have performance relative to a benchmark? And I mean, for the holdings that we had, were they underperforming?
That's a, it's a great question.
Well, I think that's
It's the question, and it's a great question. The answer is I don't have it certainly tonight. BlackRock is, over the next few meetings, in fact, I talked to the representative today. We're going to be taking the next few meetings and doing a couple of things. You know, our board, like your board, I guess, has a lot of new members, a lot of good new members, by the way. I think we're doing a good job recruiting good contributors. So we're going to, we're going to review how we got where we are, what our investments are in, why we're in those investments, how they relate to industry standards, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and things like going back. To be perfectly honest, we've had several advisors since 1999. I think, I can think of five. And to think that they'll be able to go back to that level of detail, I'm guessing is going to be a problem.
Other question was, are they using, or are you using, I guess it would be BlackRock, are they using some sort of composite index?
Yeah, that should be on here. Yeah, that should be on here. So if you go to page, let's go back to the pension fund. If you go to page five, you'll see that the total portfolio for 175 million, right, in December, 488 in September, and then you have a one-month, a three-month return, and a ITD, I don't know what the thing, ITD. Ignore the ITD, I'm not sure what that
The liquid portfolio benchmark, that's
Yes, underneath it would be the liquid portfolio benchmark, and then the number underneath it, which they call active return, which I think is a very poor use of words, is simply looking at how we've strayed from that benchmark. So we've actually
Underperformed a little bit.
Yeah, which makes sense, because there's some small amount of fees in the index funds.
You know, on page seven, the footnote says that the historical performance is calculated since the inception date of 2424. It doesn't say it's since 2005. Where are you?
On page seven, using the BlackRock pagination.
Okay.
The case that Jim was asking about.
Yeah.
The footnote indicates that the 7.97% equity return is actually since June, not since 2005.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
It's very confusing.
It is.
It says on a lot of the pages. Page 11, it has it on.
I was just looking back at what we used to get from Vanguard, and they only ever calculated it back to their own, their own inception, too.
Well, I've asked them to do their best to gather information from the past. You know, this is almost like a game of telephone, right? We've had, like I said, I think, five advisors, including BlackRock, in these 25 years. So every advisor is picking up information from the one before, who picked it up from the one before. So BlackRock is only as accurate as Vanguard was giving them, and obviously, only as accurate as the guy behind, the group before them, et cetera.
Just looking at, they picked one at random. Third quarter of 2022, Vanguard said that the pension fund was up 17.47% since they started, and they were lucky to start in March 2020. I don't know what the exact date, but they picked the market bottom to become our advisor, I guess. Does that sound right? Is that when we took them on?
I don't remember, but it sounds about right.
So there's no way that we only returned 8% since inception on equities, it seems to me.
That's correct.
Since our inception.
Yeah, depending on who is the septor, right?
But our expected return in our annual financial statement is actually only 5.5%, the town's audited financial statements have an equity expected
Or equity?
Yeah, 5.5%, 6%. And then long-term expected return on everything is 6.9%. So based on those rather paltry expectations, you're doing great.
In that category. So alluding to what you're just mentioning, one of the things we had recently was an experience study by Milliman, who's our new actuary. And what they do is they look at the portfolio as it exists, and they apply what they think are expected long-term returns to equities, fixed income, alternatives, and then they look at the blends we have and the percentage and so forth. And their, I think it's called a Monte Carlo simulation, their computer spits out an expected return, which
It actually doesn't sound paltry to me at all. If you have this diversified portfolio and you're saying it's going to be annualized going forward, they're saying, what they're doing is they're saying this is the mean return. They're looking at what all this stuff did historically. Yeah. And then they're saying this is the expected return, and they can probably calculate ball off it, too, right? They're, they're going back and they're looking at the returns of everything they had, okay, and they're mixing it together, and they're getting, they're getting the, they're getting the average return over X period of time. But so 6%, 7% doesn't sound wrong at all, right? Like, why does that seem, why does that seem paltry to you if they're
No, no, the expected return in the financial report is paltry.
But if I'm saying
The real return is Are you referring to, I apologize, are you referring to the 6.9 going forward or what we had going backwards? Well, the 6.9 going forward is simply, simply Milliman's and Milliman is not a, you know, they're not like a, they're a lynch, so they're, I don't know where they're getting their model from exactly, but it's probably one of these big financial firms. They're simply saying that their projected forward expectation is that our blend, when it all works out, 6.9% is a reasonable expectation.
Okay.
It's not a prediction. It's not a guarantee of any sort, but it's, it's a number.
You're saying that that, that in the
I think that they're two different, they're two different things. Yeah, no, it's okay. They're just, they're not necessarily two. Before I, I've already taken too much time, I think. Let me just answer the question that came from Miska and Jim Walsh as well. If you go to page, back to page six, right? No. Yes, I'm sorry, six. So if you're about halfway through the page there, there's one of our alternative portfolios is Lexington Middle Market Two, which happens to be a secondary fund, by the way. It's, it's a fund that tries to buy private equity pieces that other people are selling. Anyway, and that was a fund that, if I remember correctly, we had a $15 million, excuse me, a $15 million commitment to. And the way private equity works is you make a commitment, but they don't, they don't ask for the full $15 million on the day you make this investment, okay? They, the expression is call, capital calls. So they may start off by taking a million dollars, I'm making these numbers up, and then over time, they're going to literally call or email us and say, we've identified a new investment opportunity, we need $2 million of your commitment. And we're obligated to make those contributions, whether or not we change our mind later on. And so then, over time, they're going to be obviously selling some of those investments and hopefully making profits and so forth, and they're going to return those funds to us over time. And eventually, the vehicle dies of its own accord with hopefully a positive return. So on a $15 million commitment, the remaining net asset value, if you look, is $85,051. And the, and the quarter before it was $721,224. So what happened was, there was a large return of capital to us during the quarter of about $500,000. I talked to them today. And the way they, it's not, it's not well-reported, to be perfectly honest, because it's not time-weighted. So it happened early in the quarter, and it was recorded as a loss, but it's not a loss, because it's a return of our capital. There was a small loss, because there was a write-down of one of the small investments that's sitting there, but it was more like 20%. But I want to emphasize, we're talking about a very small remaining balance on a, almost half a billion-dollar pension fund. So, so I'd urge you to kind of ignore the minus 63 number, which admittedly jumps out at you, but it really is kind of meaningless.
Ken, but from inception means from when they've had our money, the entire time that they've had in our investment, correct?
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to plead the fifth on this one, because BlackRock down here implies that it's from June 24, 24.
Okay.
So I'm going to urge you to allow me to come back to you in the next quarter or two, after we've done a real proper review on this. Was there any other questions? No, Miska, do you have any other?
I know, we're not, we're not taking questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but you, Laurie, you sent it to me in the email.
Yes, I did, but we don't have public comment on this side.
Got it, got it. I think the other, I think the other question in the email was about fees, which is a fair question. And the answer is that, is that BlackRock, we joined up, they joined up with us very recently. Vanguard was our previous advisor. They went out of the business, so they fired us, so to speak. And we did a full RFP to pick a new advisor. We had, I forget the exact number of applicants, but they were substantial. We had a subcommittee. We broke it down into, I think, five candidates, interviewed them, and I think did everything quite appropriately. BlackRock, I think their name speaks for themselves, they're maybe the biggest financial institution in the world now, I think. And, and they were the most aggressive in pricing as well. So we pay them five basis points fee for their advisory work, and we pay them a flat fee for the ETFs that are in the portfolio, which is about 80% of the portfolio. And that's two and a half basis points. So on a fee basis, there, it's very attractive. And so far, they've, you know, they've given us good service. We're pleased.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Mary?
I just wanted to clarify something you said earlier. So in the beginning with OPEB, before we built it up, we just had very simple investments. And then we switched to invest it more like the pension plan itself. And, um, and, and we tried to meet certain targets and you said BlackRock's been very good about adjusting to the targets on the type of investments, like equities, bond.
Keeping the allocations.
Alternatives. Are we going to go back to a more simple model? Or, or you, we like the allocations that we have now?
Uh, I want to be careful. You know, I only, I, I'm only, I may be the chair of the pension board, but I'm only one vote at the table. Uh, I think that it is fair to say that a couple of items are on the table for discussion. But I think it's not extraordinary, I think it's normal. One would be the international allocations. Not because they're good or bad, or not because the performance has been good or bad, actually. I think there's questions as to why a pension fund that, that lives in America, that has American employees making American wages, necessarily should have international investments. In other words, I think that's more of a philosophical discussion that we're going to take up at our, at our, at our pension table. And alternatives, you know, I'm not the only person who's questioned whether the high fees and the illiquidity of alternatives is a, a good idea in general. So I'd like to, at the very least, make sure that that is a topic that's explored going forward. So I, I can't promise you whether a year from now we'll have a super simple portfolio like we used to in the past, or whether it will remain a little more high-tech, if you want to call it that.
Kind of depends on the market, how much does better.
Well, no, I wish I could have a crystal, I have no idea, no. It's, it's, it's going to be more what we think is appropriate going forward, uh, yeah. Okay?
Okay, any other questions? All right, Ken, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your presentation, thanks for being with us.
Got it, see you in a quarter.
All right.
Thank you.
So I want to ask the board if it's okay, the first selectman is, um, uh, trying to get to the RTM meeting. And if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to ask that we move item six up next before we get into the two quarterly discussions so that he can present that, uh, along with the town attorney and be on his way. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, so we're going to move then to, um, item six, which is to hear a legal update on reorganization activities. And before we jump into this item, I just want to give some background for the benefit of the public. This agenda item relates to an issue that was discussed during our, I believe it was our January meeting. And specifically, it relates to the first selectman's organization of a capital projects group, which is responsible for managing construction and other capital projects for the town. There was a letter circulated to some residents, uh, which may also have been published, I can't recall, alleging that the creation of this capital project group constituted a new department and was therefore in violation of the town charter under the interpretation that new departments need to be formalized via ordinance. Those allegations prompted concerns among some residents and a number of questions by our board members. Uh, and it also prompted discussion among our board, first around the charter provision that was being referenced, which was less than clear, in my opinion, and second around precedent, because in recent years, the previous administration had made multiple organizational changes and created departments via the budget process without an ordinance. So in light of this confusion language in the charter and the town's past practice, we ask that the administration get a legal opinion to provide guidance and clarity and help us understand if any actions were necessary. So the purpose of this agenda item is to close the loop on this issue and help board members understand the relevant provisions of the charter and how they impact the town, uh, in the event there are future organization changes. Uh, the legal opinion was distributed to board members several weeks ago and it is included in the backup materials on page one forty six. So I'm going to turn this over to the first selectman to briefly walk us through it. And we also have the town attorney here, if there are any questions about the legal analysis.
All right, so stand up here, Laura.
It's up to you.
Well, I was planning on just giving an update on where we are with some of the management team. First, this might help frame the conversation. So first of all, DPW now reports to David Becker. David Becker reports to me. Engineering falls under DPW. Capital Project Management Team is within engineering. Eli Gazal, who heads the Capital Projects Management Team, is and has always been under DPW. In the upcoming budget year, we plan to break out the Capital Projects Management Team as a separate group from engineering under DPW. The Parks Department, org code seventy eighty, was created, um, two years ago, three years ago, by moving the fields maintenance team out of DPW and under Parks and Recreation. This should not have happened without an RTM resolution, as can be seen in the town attorney's opinion. So we will be moving this team back to DPW. We will not be filling the superintendent of Parks position. The Capital Projects Management Team will fulfill that role. We are currently one headcount over budget under engineering and one headcount under budget in parks. We will ask the Board of Finance for a budget transfer from Parks to engineering in the future. This will free up part of Anthony Calabrese's time. Anthony will be moving to a new position with greater responsibility, with Parks and Recreation without field maintenance and Human Services reporting to him. We are not asking for a new headcount for this change. Anthony will appoint an interim Parks and Recreation Director. This person and Julie DeMarco will, will report directly to him. An example of success with this type of structure is West Hartford. And you can take a look at their website to see what that looks like. But Anthony will bring his extensive programming experience to Fairfield's Youth Services Bureau, which currently falls under Parks and Recreation, but should collaborate extensively with Julie DeMarco's Human Services Department. These changes will create a more efficiently and dynamically managed town by ensuring closer oversight of key departments and reducing the number of department heads reporting directly to the first selectman. So I think you've all, I mean, I'm, I'm here, I can answer questions about the opinion, but it's, I mean, I just wanted to let everyone know that this is what's going on. And, um, everyone's been notified of the change and Anthony's quite excited. And I just want to congratulate him publicly.
So, thank you, Mr. Gerber, and I'll open it up to the board for questions, but maybe, could you just clarify the change with Mr. Calabrese and his responsibilities? And then the unwinding of the Parks Department, um, to put that back in DPW, is that been done already or is that going to be implemented in the new budget?
Well, I, I, I would like it to happen ASAP, um, so that we can, uh, we are looking at getting efficiencies, we have a challenging budget year coming up. And, um, we think this will help with efficiencies and there's really no reason to wait. But, um, you know, it's a standalone group, um, it can easily be, it, it's sort of semantics, it can be managed by Mr. Becker. Because right now, it, it shouldn't be under Parks, so, uh, instead of asking for a resolution from the board of, uh, from the RTM to make it official, we wanted to move back into the DPW, um, sphere.
Okay, thank you, um, questions from the board? Yeah, go ahead. Jim?
Is Bucky still going to be heading up the, uh, DPW?
So Bucky heads up DPW and is reporting to Mr. Becker. But, um, Bucky is retiring in May.
Because we're supposed to have an engineer be pursuant to our charter. So we've been in breach of our charter during Ms. Kupchak's term and now during your term. What are you going to do about that?
Um, I'm actually waiting to get a, a resolution, uh, or a final, you know, answer to that will come from the Charter Revision Committee.
So you're going to stay in breach? You're going to stay in breach of the charter till then? With the hope that it changes?
I hope it changes because I think it's not the correct way to operate. I didn't hire Mr. Marsilio, but he's been, um, an amazing asset to the town. I believe that, um, it's a antiquated, maybe, um, you know, an antiquated rule. It would be difficult for me to ask him to leave now, within a couple of months of his retirement and to hire an interim person with a PE degree, I don't really know if we can actually find that person.
You don't, you don't, you don't know until you try and it's a bad process not to file, follow the charter. And despite criticizing Ms. Kupchak about this, you've continued to do this.
Well, I didn't criticize Ms. Kupchak about it.
During, during your term. So I don't understand, you know, hoping that the charter passes, hope is not a strategy. The strategy is following the charter. And that's what you're required to do. And you're the CEO of the town, so I don't understand why you want to just continue to breach the charter.
Well.
Especially if you know that he is leaving, you should be in an active search right now for, for a candidate that meets the charter requirement.
I mean, that's fair, we, we will look for, um, a candidate with a PE. But there are some practicalities, you, you, you know, not going to promote somebody with a PE or hire someone with a PE that can't manage people. So if we can find someone, you know, for the price point that is reasonable with the PE, absolutely, we would hire, we would consider that person. But I'm not going to hire, um, the wrong person because they have a PE. And if we're in breach of the charter and, um, you know, which, you know, I, I wouldn't have done if, you know, I would have gone outside and, and tried to find someone with the right qualifications, but, you know, this person was hired and he's been doing a, a really good job. And, um, I didn't feel that it was a wise move to let him go for that reason. But I don't recall you complaining about it before, so.
Well, I, I've been waiting for you to source somebody, I mean, I, I've not, I've not liked it. The charter is the charter and we should follow it.
There's a lot of ways that the charter wasn't followed before, including approval of contracts was broken habitually under the former administration. This is one area where I didn't believe it was a wise move to let somebody go who was competent. But if you really feel that strongly about it, you know, maybe you guys can force me to fire Bucky before he's, he's, I mean, I, I'm not sure where you're going with this, Jim, seems a little, um, besides the point.
It's really not besides the point because you're basically hoping that the voters have already turned down one charter revision.
Well, he'll be leaving before the new charter, um, before the new charter is approved. So we will go out and do a search for a, um, for a PE, uh, even though I think it's no longer, um, really, you know, necessary. But we will certainly put that in the job description, but if we can't find somebody, you know, we need a DPW head.
Well, that search should have already been got, begun.
Okay, can we, um, I, I'm not sure this is, uh.
You're not asking a question?
Yeah, it's, uh, not, it's not on the agenda, so.
No, I, I don't think, yeah, I want to.
It's not part of a reorg, I'm not getting rid of a DPW.
You're reorganizing the entire department.
I'm not reorganizing the entire department, we have a DPW head who reports to a chief operating officer. If that was a reorganization, this would say it's a reorganization, it says it's not.
No, what you're doing is, and I understand, and I, maybe it's the right move, I think it's the right move, but I didn't think it was the right move to do before where it got split up with a Parks, you're taking half the DPW department and moving them over to the Parks Department. Because there were personality problems. And we all know that's the case, you know it as well as I know it. Except you're the CEO and I'm not. So, but you allowed that to continue to happen?
I wasn't about to fire somebody who's retiring. So, you know, we will look for a PE, but I'm just warning you that it's not as easy as some people think it is to find a professional and certified engineer that wants this job.
Okay, but you said that it's been a reasonable rate. All the salaries have been increased during, it'd be many, most of the salaries have been increased during your tenure, so.
Madam Chair, why are we talking about?
Yeah, Mr. Walsh, I'm sorry, but we are getting off topic here, I think we need to, we, the board asked, and, and I, and I asked for a legal opinion on this question that came before us and we're really veering off this. So I think some of these questions can be addressed during the budget process, but I think we should stick to the agenda item here, which is this memo, this legal memo, and the question around whether the creation of the Capital Projects Group constituted a charter violation. Are there, we, we also have the town attorney here, are there any questions for Mr. Gerber or the town attorney on these points?
Yes, I'd like the town attorney to walk through his opinion and then I'll ask him some questions.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Pierce, can you do that for us?
Sure. Um, so the first section of the opinion deals with when the town is required to follow the process. Fairfield's charter has a, um, rather detailed description of, um, certain departments, not all departments are contained within the char, charter. To the extent a department has a power in the charter, um, and, uh, you know, the, the town wants to essentially amend the charter to change how a power is, is handled in the charter. Uh, six point one, um, G, uh, requires that, uh, sets forth a process that basically allows the town to amend the charter without going through the process for amendment. So for example, the Parks Department, uh, situation, um, that, uh, entire group was, uh, moved out of one department and moved within another department. And the function that they fulfilled, uh, under the charter is clearly within DPW. Uh, that function was moved out of DPW entirely and put within a different department. That, uh, this section speaks to that and requires that it go through the process to change it. The second section deals with when it's optional for the town to follow the process, so, um, to the extent the town wants to impose requirements on certain positions, um, the town can do that, uh, without necessarily, um, but would not be required. So the example I gave is the creation of the CAO, CAO and COO positions, those are not positions that are within the charter. They are, um, at-will employees that would, um, report to the first selectman. In the absence of a provision in the charter, the, uh, board of selectmen could, if it wanted to, establish, um, an ordinance that sets forth the process for appointment and hiring and things like that. It's not required, but they, but the board of selectmen and RTM could do that if they wanted to.
Pierce, can we stop right there for a second?
Sure.
So those two positions that you just named, the CAO and the COO, um, those fall within the first selectman's department, right?
Um, I believe that's correct.
Okay, and the first selectman can set those up, those are basically political jobs, right? They don't have to be kept one year to the next. Those people can be fired wholeheartedly as soon as a, a new election happens and someone else is elected, correct? Just like anybody in the first selectman's department can. Those are political appointments.
So I, I think the extent to which they're political, I don't comment on. I mean, they're at-will employees and an at-will employee can be terminated unless there's some contractual reason not to. I'm not aware of there being a contract with the CAO. Um, I don't believe there's a contract with the COO, I think that they're at-will employees.
And they're not in unions, correct?
My understanding is they're not in unions.
And it's been traditional, you've been here long enough that different first select persons, um, set up their offices differently? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. You know, having been here for a while, those, everybody in the first select person's office is basically an at-will employee, meaning that if a new first select person comes in, they get to choose their team. And Ms. Kupchak wanted to do it her way, Mr. Gerber wants to do it another, is that fair to say?
Um, yes, sure.
Okay, okay, so that's why those positions, I mean, can you think of any other positions in this section, section two? Can you think of any other positions that exist that would be, you know, as you described, optional?
An optional position?
An optional position, other than a political position within the first selectman's office?
Well, it's, it's any position that's not in the charter, so there's, I mean, that's almost every position at the town, other than the department heads that are specifically set forth in the charter. I mean, there's a list in the charter, we can go through it, but it's, that's the list of positions that the town is required to have. Um, many of those are required by statute as well, but those are the ones in the charter. Um, many of those are required by statute as well, but those are the ones in the charter.
Okay, but they're not union positions, correct?
Um, most of them are not. I believe that the tax collector is in the union. Um, I'm not sure if he still is, Bill might know that, but.
Now, the tree warden is.
I'm talking about your optional positions.
The optional positions?
Yes.
Your, your, your question was whether, whether the optional positions are not in the union?
Yeah, the ones you quoted in your, in paragraph.
The two that I quoted are not in the union. However, the, the other, I mean, your other question was extremely broad. So if we take the entire universe of all town employees and we carve out the ones that are specifically set forth in the charter, I think the vast majority of the employees that would be remaining would be union employees.
Exactly. They're a little harder to, to, to terminate because they've stepped, they, they, they have bumping rights all the way down pursuant to their union rules, correct?
Their, their rights are gonna be determined by the collective bargaining agreement.
Exactly. Except for these two positions you mentioned.
Well, not, not except for those two positions, it's for anyone that would be outside the union.
Okay, are there other people outside the union that are, that are not listed here?
We have, I'm sure that there are, I mean, we have to go through the full employee list.
Okay. All right, that's the end of my questions on section two.
Okay. Um, section three, um, explains the, um, current structure the first selectman described. Um, and, um, the section of the charter that deals with D P W. Um, and, uh, confirms that there's not a charter violation, um, uh, based on the reporting structure and the, um, uh, working group that's been established, um, within, um, that, that sits within the Department of Public Works, um, for, uh, the.
Can we stop in three for a second?
Sure.
Okay, so. Mr. Gerber explained now that this department, this Capital Projects Group is now gonna be in the capital in, in Department of Public Works, correct?
Um, yes, yes, the project manager, yes.
The last meeting we talked about this, that wasn't really so clear. It was, it was, they were sitting someplace else, um, and that it was a possible other department.
Oh, in terms of longer term.
Oh, yeah, there was, there's none of this talk about how they, like, as detailed as it was here, that seems to be something new, correct?
Um, well, it was always under Eli Gazzal, who is under Public Works.
Okay, so he's always been paid under Public Works, he was never moved to any other department, correct?
No.
Okay. Um, how about Wendy Fock? You know, the last meeting we, we talked about this, I asked where she was being paid from. Your C O O told me, and I asked him when I would have the information on what department she's being paid out. And I was told the next day, within twenty-four hours. It has probably been forty-five days since then. And I still don't have any answer to that question.
Okay.
So where, can you tell me where Wendy Fock is being paid and where she's been paid since she was hired? What depart, if any and all departments actually was hired?
Yeah, I think, uh, well, she's being paid out of, um, engineering.
Always.
No, I, I think maybe her first paycheck was out of finance.
Why was that?
Um, because it was an error on the part of, um, our Human Resources Department. We didn't, I didn't know where she was being paid out. So we moved her to, um, I mean, she should have been paid out of, um, engineering. Um, went down, talked to H R, when he told us, so she's at the finance. I'm not even sure she was, I'm not sure if she was ever paid out of finance because she had just joined the company. So, uh, or joined the town. Maybe she had one paycheck, I'm not, I'm not positive.
Can we get a formal answer on that? Where she's always been paid, like a little history of what department she's been being paid at?
I, I think that's not a problem.
Okay. We get it soon, because I asked for it forty-five days ago and we still haven't had it.
Oh, I.
Despite Mr. Becker saying we'd have it within twenty-four hours.
Okay. May I ask why you want that?
I just don't have the information because I, I just, I, I just don't know, Bill. I mean, no one's able to tell us. We, we're setting up a department that seems to be putting people together, it seemed like more of a department. Now it's a whole different explanation tonight of what it was. So I would like.
Well, I never, never said it was a department, I said it was a team.
Okay.
You said it was a department, so that's why we've got the legal opinion. I, I never said it was a department, I said I did originally have expectations of a reorganization. Um, you, you felt that we were doing something illegal, we got an opinion, it's not. I'm really not in a rush to do this and I never was, to form a new department. I just want a team of people that can manage projects. Really, that's, you know, could be an engineering function, it's a capital projects management team. I think, um, maybe you read more into it than, than, than what actually was. It is a group of people with capital projects management experience, not unlike people that would typically work in engineering.
I, I like to correct direction. I never said it was illegal, I was questioning whether it was a breach of the charter.
Oh, that would be illegal.
That, 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 that's what I was.
Okay.
Okay, okay, not gonna be criminal charged.
Well, if it's against the charter, it's, it's against the law, right?
Well, no, it just goes against the running of our town property. It's like, like the bylaws of a company, like you, you, you've worked with companies and they have bylaws and they can't breach them, right?
Yeah, but, but it turns out we did not breach the charter.
We're like a three or four hundred million dollar corporation.
Right, but we didn't breach the charter, so I understand why you were concerned.
Okay. But I never said it was illegal.
Okay.
Um, and then Troy Deering?
Yes.
Okay, where does Troy work out of?
Out of engineering.
Okay, and always has?
I think he always has, he was the last of the project managers to join. Uh, but we'll double check that he never got a paycheck out of.
I just liked him wherever, I'd like to know that where he, he, or I presume it's a he, but maybe it's a she, but.
It's a he.
It's a, um, what departments he has ever been paid out of. And, 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 um, Ms. Orson?
Yeah.
Um, she's always been in, in more engineering?
No, she is, um, in, um, W P C A. Because I think mainly, um, I mean, she replaced, um, she's an N, uh, P E, she's an engineer and is doing a significant amount of her work with W P C A.
Okay. Uh, and she's just a member of the group?
Yes, she is sitting with the, the team.
In where, where is she sitting?
She's sitting in this building with the Capital Projects Management Team, doing a significant amount of work for D P W.
Okay.
I mean, for, um, W P C A.
Were any of these people ever listed in the town directory that they were in the department?
I, I don't know. In, in, in a department or described as like the capital projects management.
When you look up in the, in the, in the town directory, it says what department you work in.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure, I can check that too.
Okay. You can get back to me on that. Um, Mr. Harris here, is he taking notes on the questions we're supposed to get answered? Okay, thanks, Tom. I appreciate it. Okay. Uh. Is, just a couple of things off, I was taking some notes as you were going. Um, the, I think it was, I'm, I'm gonna mispronounce his name, as I always do. George Casagois, is he still working as a superintendent for the Parks Department?
Hi, uh, David's not here. Um, he was working part-time and I am not sure if he's still helping out. He said that he, wait, there are two Casagois's, I think it was George who was helping out.
Yes.
Anthony, um, and said he did not wanna work until, uh, when it was cold out. So I'm assuming he's not working there anymore.
Okay. And you will not need a superintendent any longer because the department is being, um, is, is being.
Moving back, yeah.
In, into, into, uh, Public Works. And will there be any type of superintendent there now? Or is that gonna be a new position?
No.
Okay, there'll be no superintendent for, in, in, in the Department of Public Works any longer?
Well, a lot of what, um, Doug Novak, a lot of what Doug was doing, um, was, you know, these types of projects that Troy Deering and others will pick up as, as, you know, project managers. So the actual job that he was doing is no longer, it's not required to be a separate job.
Okay. So some of the public, um, some of the Capital Projects Group members are gonna act as kind of a superintendent for the capital, for their Department of Public Works employees.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, he's got a number of employees and for the reasons that he, that Anthony had wanted him, a lot of that was building projects, we're moving, building, um, you know, um, um, construction type projects out of, um, the hands of, uh, a diverse group of departments and moving, um, the management of that into one group. So we're doing the same for, you know, the police used to manage their own, uh, capital projects, the fire departments managed their own capital projects. We're moving them into a professional capital projects management team. We're happy with it.
Okay. Uh, and was Mr. Casagois, was he being paid for in the Parks Rec budget?
In the Parks budget.
The Parks budget. Okay. But that won't happen any longer, correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay, uh, and then I have a question in regards, just referring to your presentation, the, um, Anthony's bigger, uh, position. What's the name of that position?
Um, still, I mean, still, um, hashing out the name.
Okay. But you're gonna be replacing, um, a position for Anthony's current position, creating a new position?
Yes, um, one of, one of his employees will be, or is Parks and Rec Director under him, most likely. We haven't named that person yet.
Okay. Is there gonna be a budgetary problem with our current budget? Because now you're gonna be moving somebody up to be the director of Parks and Recreation, and now you're creating a new position to look over two other departments. That being Parks and Recreation and the other one being humans, human services.
I, we don't foresee a budget problem for this year. Um, but, um, we are looking at market for all, all senior employees. Um, and I would anticipate that we're getting an increase for this next year in the budget.
Who, David? I mean, I don't know who, um.
Anthony.
Anthony, so you offered him the position, but he's not gonna be starting at the position? So there's no, he's still gonna be making the same salary that he was budgeted for as the Parks and Rec Director?
This is all, um, TBD.
TBD like?
To, to be determined, we have not finalized, um, this compensation yet, but it, you know, has to work within the budget.
Within their budget?
Within.
And you're, and you're, you're making a statement that, that department's not gonna go over because of this, correct?
Uh, I don't, I, I, the, the town's not gonna go over. If I have to get a transfer, which I'm not aware that I would have to, I'll come and ask you for it.
Well, you should be asking us for it before they go over. So if you, if you have anticipation that they're gonna go over, you should be asking this board for more money before you're hiring somebody for that position.
Not anticipating it's gonna go over, anticipating that he will take this job and you will, um, adjust his salary accordingly in the budget.
So for next year?
Yeah.
Okay, for July first?
For, for the budget, yeah. But I, I am anticipating that this, um, reporting relationship will start, uh, as soon as possible.
Okay. All right, Mr. Pierce, I have no more further questions on section three of your. Opinion?
Okay. So, um, so section four, the first selectman had brought to our attention two, uh, specific items that he wanted us to review in terms of, um, whether the section six point one, G one procedure needed to be followed. The first was the Parks Department, which we've already discussed. And then the second was the creation of the Fairfield County Regional Dispatch Center, um, which we concluded that the creation of that did not violate the charter. Um, and that's, uh, that's for B. For A is the section that relates to the Parks Department.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Are there any other questions on the, um, on this, uh, matter from, from the board? Okay. All right, well, thank you, um, Mr. Gerber. Thank you, Mr. Pierce, for being here and for answering our questions, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So we are gonna, um, circle back now and go to the original. Item four, which is to review the B O E fiscal twenty-five Q two financial update. Uh, the backup for this item is posted online, it begins on page eighteen. Uh, Courtney Laborius and I believe, uh, Superintendent of here.
Madam Chairwoman, can I ask a question before we get started?
Sure.
Is there a reason why it's, uh, is not in our backup?
Why, why is that in our backup?
The report and all the backup for it are not in our packet here today.
Uh, it's in, it's posted, it's in my backup.
We asked that, you know, you, you understand, we asked that, we don't all have to use our printers to print this stuff out. We normally get a full package unless we say we don't want one at our table.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I don't know what you have at the table since I'm not there, but maybe follow up with Jen Carpenter on that one.
Madam Chair, um, if I might, Jen Carpenter did ask me to bring printed copies.
Okay.
Um, and I'm happy to pass those out, I'm sorry that you don't, yeah, okay.
Um, and again, for, uh, members of the public, this is, backup is posted beginning on page eighteen.
There's some for the other side of the table.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laborius.
You're welcome. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to present. Uh, it's good to see everyone. Um, good evening, Courtney Laborius, Chief Financial Officer for Board of Education. Um, I'll start, um, first of all, by saying that this is the second quarter. You know, you know, our third quarter results are gonna be, um, we're, we're compiling them and we have, we don't have them yet. So this is still, you know, two or three months ago. Um, but I'll talk through and say, as of the second quarter, the shortfall, um, with the first quarter was a hundred thirty-three thousand when we last spoke to you. Um, that gap is remained steady and, and grown just a little bit to be about four hundred and sixty-six thousand. Um, the contributing factors remain the same as the last we spoke with you. Uh, our substitute costs are significantly higher than budgeted or anticipated. And, um, we had a minor shortfall in the pension, which I'll talk to you about. And special education, the gap has grown a little bit. Um, so without further, we, we do anticipate that we will be able to cover this gap. Um, now, as you know, in the third quarter, we get additional experience with the winter months. Um, so in the past, we've had, we've been able to cover those shortfalls with utilities, um, surpluses, indoor surpluses in transportation. Um, I don't yet have this.
How's that working out now?
It's cold. So, you know, we have to see, you know, the, we're a little bit lagged in the bills. Um, there's a chance that we will have to freeze some accounts, but I do wanna say that we do remain confident with the support of the board that we'll be able to cover this shortfall at this point in time. Um, and so I just wanted to go through point by point. So in personal services, we're projecting a hundred and seventy thousand dollar gap. That includes, as I mentioned, the higher substitute teacher costs. It's a projected gap, gap of about four hundred and thirty-three thousand. Um, that's more staff absences, both daily and long-term. Um, so even just looking at through January, the point when we did the second quarter, um, we had, I believe, about a hun, eight hundred and eighty more paid sub days than we had last year. And last year was high as well. So, um, did you wanna speak to that a little bit before I move?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to address the issue, but as of, um, close of day last Thursday, uh, we continue to see an increase in teacher absences that require substitute coverage. Obviously, you can't have a classroom without a teacher. We do have a high success rate in filling teacher absences, um, which is a good thing, but also comes at a cost. So, um, we had a little over seventy-four hundred teacher absences total, day absences. Um, we have a, a growing number, a significant number of long-term absences, uh, for different reasons, whether it's maternity or medical, uh, which is paid at a higher rate, as you're all aware. We've talked about this in the past. So we are projecting, um, approximately, if this continues, about two million dollars in substitute costs, which we did not anticipate. We do have in next year's budget an increase to the subline, which you'll see when it comes before you. Um, hopefully, we've, we're having some conversations, uh, with folks to try to curve this, but, um.
Wh- what are the reasons you think are for this trend? You said it happened last year and now it's happening again.
Uh, I make some, I can make some assumptions. Number one, I think, um, again, long-term absences, we have some folks that have some long-term illnesses. We have a significant number of people out on maternity leave. We have significant number of people out on maternity leave. I think there was obviously some concerns coming out of the, during the pandemic of starting families, a lot of angst. And people now have come to fruition, you know, calm their nerves and we're well beyond that. So now they're getting back to starting families and things like that. I also have a theory of my own. I don't have any way to really quantify it or not, but we do cap the number of sick days that a teacher can accumulate. That was something that was in the collective bargaining unit prior to the most recent teacher contract. So I think once you get to the cap, the only way to get more days is to get, have that number drop. And I've talked to the other districts, I worked in another district that once teacher said, um, I'm at the cap, I can't accumulate any more days, so I'll take a few this year. This way then they replenish next year. I'm not saying that that is inherently happening, but, um, it, it, it could be. I think as we look at future negotiations, that, you know, having the ability to accumulate more days, um, incentivizing at the end at retirement, that teachers can get something in return by saving the district, you know, along the way, by not having subs have to cover. Could be a way and a strategy to alleviate some of that. I don't know. We do have a veteran staff. So they've been here a long time for the most part, so they have, I, I, I would venture to say the vast majority do have, uh, their cap maxed out in what the days they're getting.
Okay, is there any checks and balances on that? I mean, like years ago, like Chief Felner and other chiefs would like check on people. To make sure like, like, are you really at, at home sick or are you on vacation? Or are you doing other things that don't meet the requirement of being a sick day?
So, yes, yes. So we have been having tough conversations, uh, with union leadership, also building administrators have been talking to staff that may be developing patterns on when they take days off. We've docked people pay in the last two years for taking vacation when, uh, school was in session. Uh, we've terminated some employees that do not have the same protections for putting in a request to go on vacation when school was in session. It was denied and they went anyway. Um, so yeah, we are taking some measures as to alleviate this issue. But again, you know, when people do the occasional, I'm out sick for a day or two, not much you can do. The new legislation, uh, which should, I don't believe, and we're trying to advocate should not uh, pertain to municipalities, isn't going to help us either. The paid sick leave that kicked in January first, um, where you can't ask for the five days for a reason that goes against collective bargaining, where we have to ask for a doctor's. We have the ability to ask for a doctor's note after four days. But the state of Connecticut changed that, so now we don't have the ability to do that under the new, new law. New law that, um, and that was enacted and kicked in on January one. So to your point, someone could go on vacation, not tell anyone, and we can't ask why they were out for five days.
You can't ask?
Not anymore.
But you could find out, correct?
We have done some.
Like you, you could hire, like you could put, hire the services of a private investigator, correct?
Yeah, I don't think we'd go that route, but, um, we usually bank on people's, um, lack of inability to post on social media. That's been our method. People can't help themselves. They go on vacation and have to post pictures when they're supposed to be at work.
Yeah, I don't get that, but something.
But we, we've docked probably almost a dozen employees in the last year and a half.
Here's two million dollars, a lot of money for your budget.
It's.
And if it's going to continue, that's a lot more money for the taxpayer if we're going to have to start budgeting. For example, taking sick days is not sick days. So I think strategy is going to have to be continued, continued
Correct.
to be developed by your administration and the board.
Well, and it's also easy for folks to get doctors, obviously, these days. Uh, it's, it's just the reality that we face.
That's unfortunate.
Yes.
The doctors could not be honest.
Ask a follow-up question. Do we have a younger staff? It seems like we had a lot of retirements during COVID and now maybe younger staff are more likely to take maternity leave.
I mean, we, we do, but we al- we didn't always replace the retirees with, you know, first, second, third, fourth year teachers. So we did replace them with some veterans and a lot of veteran staff as well. So I just think that, you know, we have people that also are starting families later in life as well, so.
And it's a trend we're seeing elsewhere too. So Fairfield isn't entirely unique, seeing that big increase in, um, teacher absences, uh, after COVID and these few years later. We are a little unique in the following.
Yeah, I think, I would say we're at the high side, um, compared, comparatively speaking to colleagues.
I do understand, obviously, I think what you make, said makes a lot of sense. Some people waited to have their pregnancies till after the COVID situation was got under control. But are you seeing colleagues from other towns or are you hearing as a group colleagues and, uh, your fellow colleagues having the same problem or is this seem to be a Fairfield specific problem?
I was told by one of our administrators that about ten years ago, there was an article written in the Connecticut Post that chronicled absences in Fairfield was was named in that article. I, I, I can't verify that, but I don't know why somebody would, that would say that, but uh, I did talk to a number of my colleagues in the last six, eight months about this. There was one other district that was facing an issue similar to this a couple of years ago. Um, they well, it was signed on by all the union heads. So it wasn't coming from the district or from the Board of Ed offices. It came from a collective group of, you know, the union heads as well. Everybody got a, a letter and it made a difference in the following year. People were more cognizant of their days, he said. So we're working to see if we can do something similar, but, um, no one else has seen. They see a lot of vacancies that they're covering in, in, uh, response with subs, but that's saving them money, but it's also cheating kids out of proper education. So we don't want that.
Understood.
Thank you.
So other factors like FMLA and staff attrition are accounted for in production. The modest gap in personnel is expected to be afforded with transfers from the wage and benefit reserve. This reflects the timing of contract settlement versus payment, um, and new teacher hires coming in at the higher steps than had in the past. Um, on the fixed charge side, health insurance has a slight surplus due, due to lower than expected initial enrollment at the higher, um, rate family structure. Um, pension costs have exceeded budget, the town pension, due to, um, higher town valuations and these have already been paid. If you'll recall, we had that as a conversation this time last year. Um, it's taken into account in, uh, this budget request for next year. Life insurance rates have risen near, um, after nearly seven years of stability. That this has also been taken into account in the budget ask for next year. Special ed is a big thing. We're going to have a lot of conversations about that in the budget. Um, so in twenty twenty-one, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, eighty percent of our, um, costs above the, the four and a half times average were reimbursed. So for example, four point seven million of, um, costs, three point eight of that was reimbursed. It, last year, we were looking at only sixty-six point seven percent. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, four million of costs, only two point seven million reimbursed. So we were one point three million, um, of unreimbursed costs by the state. And even when they made an adjustment legislatively last year, um, you know, to, to adjust that, that and make, um, tiered caps, um, it's still left just about seven hundred thousand dollars short. So, um, higher than anticipated increases in the out of district rates as well. And, um, that is, is a big talent, especially the state not living up to its commitment to special education. Um, on support and operations, we've seen some shifts in support and operational expenses. Professional development and tuition reimbursement have increased as expected under the new teacher contract. Uh, we addressed this in the current budget proposal. However, we've offset some of this with savings with fewer enrollments in our magnet schools. And we had adjustments in print management, which, um, yielded some savings and the shift to personnel for the athletic trainer services, um, which we were able to bring them in-house at a good rate. Um, no longer use contracted services. Um, for the utilities, winter billing will provide more clarity. It's cold, so, you know, we don't expect to see the big surpluses we saw last year. Um, we're committed to careful financial oversight of this and we'll have an update in the third quarter. We're, in the Q two, we held that projection flat. The capital budget largely allocated to technology was at that time over ninety percent encumbered or spent. And we expect the remaining balance to be fully utilized by the third quarter. Um, so in, in summary, while we have some shortfalls in the areas previously identified, we are committed to our careful financial oversight and are working to close that gap by the end of the year. As we monitor the winter utility trends, including the freezing weekend, uh, busing and our substitute expenditures, we will have more substantive conversations at the upcoming final activity with our third quarter presentation. So thank you, and we're happy to answer any additional questions you might have through the chair.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. Uh, Mr. Matola?
Hi, everyone. Um, I guess Superintendent Testani, can, can you, wha- what is on the sp- special education costs and state reimbursement, what, what do you see happening in the horizon with respect to that, if anything? I mean, so we're, we're, if I understand the presentation tonight, data short ha- hasn't paid us what we believe we should be entitled to through state reimbursement. Is that, is that going to be the trend moving forward? And I'd just like to hear your opinion on it because it is costing the district a boatload of money. Am I wrong about that?
No, it's costing everybody a boatload of money.
I get that, so what's the remedy?
What the state does is allocate a fixed number of dollars and that money then gets allocated to districts on excess cost. There's been a lot of chatter for years and advocacy to increase the excess cost, reimbursements and everything else. Um, we, you know, I'm part of, uh, an advisory council, uh, with the commissioner. We've begun to really advocate more away from reimbursement increases because that doesn't seem to be getting any traction and starting to look at incentivizing districts to keep programs in-house and create programs or to expand programs or to, um, reward districts that do a good job, similar to Fairfield within district programming. That is starting to get a lot of traction. I think that's more of an appealing, um, idea for, for the governor and for the state lawmakers to wrap their heads around. I think there's a lot of advocacy for that. Um, there are some people that do have some, um, I guess hesitancy because they may not have the capacity to build an in-house program, some of the smaller districts. But I think if they incentivize districts such as Fairfield, for the work we're doing to keep kids here, and you'll see that when we get later into the budget season, that our out of district placements are declining, um, as the years are going. The only issue is because of the decline, the cost per tu- for tuition for a student is going up. And you'll see that as well. So our out of district costs are going up. Um, and as we allocate more money to our school budget, our threshold keeps going up as well. So there's less to be reimbursed on. So I think if things are trending in the way I think it's going to go, we should be receiving more money for our in-house programs. And if we can continue to show that, um, those programs are keeping kids in district rather than sending them out, hopefully that translates to more money, um, from the state in our budget.
Okay.
Because I think the other argument and the other advocacy has fallen on deaf ears. Because no one wants to hear, and I, I keep trying to tell even some of my colleagues, no one wants to hear Darian and Nucan and complain about excess cost reimbursement. Um, it's just a bad look.
Yeah.
The, the other argument, the other, um, angle is a better way to, to advocate for more money is that we want to do better job in districts. So give us the money to expand our programming to service our kids. And I think that's definitely gotten the air of a lot of people.
Okay, I, I will chat about that, but this issue when we hear your budget, but, uh, thanks for the answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Are there any other questions? Uh, Ms. Rogero?
Thanks. When you bring up expanding programs to keep, um, students in district, do we have the space to expand these programs?
No.
So how are we going to manage that?
Well, I, I think that's going to be a, a topic for a larger discussion when it comes to capital projects. Right now, we're, we're tight in certain schools as a, as a result of some of our in-district program. Hate to beat a dead horse, but we're going to beat the horse a little bit. Mill Hill is at more than capacity because we do have a specialized program up there. We have two classrooms for CLC. Um, so we could use some space alleviation up there, uh, but we just don't have anywhere to put them right now. So I do think this is part of a larger conversation, but.
If we're going to be looking at that for, um, the cost analysis on, well, we don't know, I guess, what the state would be willing to give us back to encourage towns, it sounds like. So I don't know that you can really do a cost analysis because you don't know what you'd get back, right, from this state yet?
So, no, um, so part of what we're all advocating for now and what is getting some traction is not only expansion of programs for um, staff, um, but it is also for capital. Um, and if you've heard the governor's proposed budget, universal preschool is coming faster than anybody can, you know, we, we thought it was in the near future, but it's coming fast and furious. And I think that's going to be, um, something we also have to consider as we talk about capital projects is, um, the need for more space for, for preschool because it's, it's coming.
What time, what age does that start at? Two?
Three.
Three? So every kid would be entitled to, um, public education, starting at three years old?
A program.
Part of that program?
Correct.
Not just kids that are in like the, the birth to three or that?
No, not just kids that.
We're talking about anybody. And who covers that cost?
Well, I mean, right now we have a sliding scale in terms of, of our billing of, of student, of parents. And I don't think that's, that, that's not going to change, but I think giving more kids access um, is, is something that governor's really committed to.
Well, we're going to get into the space issue again.
Correct.
Because it's all coming down, we're having the huge debate, which, you know, I know we're not talking about tonight, but Dwight obviously is a huge factor.
Yep.
And, you know.
It's something that we have to be cognizant of. It's, it's something that, um, every district. I mean, we're not the only ones that are going to face issues when it comes to space, but if not, there's going to have to be community sites that are going to be part of this conversation.
We're going to have trailers at every school.
Let's, let's, let's hope not. I mean, I, I will say that the board has been, has been very firmly against moving back toward portables for a variety of reasons.
Awful, it's awful looking, it's an awful situation.
These are, these are, yeah, and, and not to, not to, as you said, open a Pandora's box about the discussion, these are topics that will be considered in the working group project for, uh, you know, especially, especially for Dwight. When the size of Dwight comes up, uh, some of the, you know, our facilities committee suggested, for example, moving some of these specialized programs from Mill Hill back up to Dwight to alleviate the space pressure at Mill Hill, but to use the, you know, space that would be available and at that point renovated up, up on top of the hill.
Incremental ECC rooms, if you did that? Is that what that, that space is or what space?
Well, that, that would, that, there are multiple, there are multiple ideas that have been floated out. I don't want to, I don't want to prejudice the, uh, the, the working group and the consultants that they've, they've hired to do that. But, uh, a variety of options were talked about, including putting a, an ECC weighing up at, at Dwight, but also using uh, additional, uh, K-five classroom space for things like the CLCs that are currently at, at Mill Hill and taking up the additional space.
Now, remember, th- three-year-olds are only entitled to a half-day program, even four-year. I mean, you don't have to provide full-day programming, but we do have full-day programming now for the kids that, um, used to go to kindergarten and are no longer, um, within that age group. So parents have an option now. If you're born on September first to December thirty-first, you don't have to start kindergarten.
So even in the universal, that scenario is still only half-day?
Correct, I'm sure, you know.
I would have thought that it would enable people to get back into the workforce or something. If they're only going for half-day, that's pretty hard.
Yes, it is difficult.
Um, um, as far as Dwight goes, you brought up the working committee and you brought up, and I know there was a lot of noise in the last week or two with this memo and it seemed like a big issue with, uh, I don't know, the, the way that the, um, with some air quality at Dwight and, you know, a memo that I think was a little excessive. But, um, the, um, I thought the working committee wasn't starting until we went through this whole process with this, you know, hiring of the consultant that's going to do this analysis with the million dollars and I thought that was still a ways off. And I thought that was still a ways off. I thought that was part of the problem, was that we were trying to get something up and running and push back.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for town hall, but I I I believe, I I attended as an observer, uh, shortlist interviews for consultants last week. Um, I'm not sure if an offer has gone out, but that that process is moving forward.
Are you involved, Mr. Testani?
In the selection of the, no.
Should you be?
Um, it's not my expertise on what a a consultant would be. I would think the consultant would speak to me, um, as the superintendent, to gather information on what, um, to relay the the educational needs of of a school building, um, in conjunction with the ed specs that the Board of Education would, is working on and going to pass. So if if not, I think they're gonna be missing an opportunity, uh, to do their own job.
Okay, I wanna, I I just wanna redirect this back to the agenda item. Um, are there any other questions on the quarterly update? Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Um, for the special education tuition, you you mentioned the rising tuition costs that you're that you're experiencing and, um, the reduced amount of state excess cost reimbursement. Are there more services though that are required? Or are you seeing what you anticipated as the amount of service you need to provide? It's just those two other variances that are causing the difference?
So I would say on the tuition side, it's it, that's outplacement. So when you talk about tuition, the outplacement. So it's the, when you, you mean the services that the individual providers are providing?
Yeah, like you started the year, you estimated what you needed for your budget, and now there's a number of other students who popped up that need services and that you are needing, you know, any of it is based on, um, the amount, the volume of the amount of services you need to provide.
On the outplacement side, the number that we projected is roughly the number of students that are being outplaced. So the number is is, um, on par for that portion of the projection. But the tuition rates themselves have increased higher. So in the past, we would have budgeted, I think it's, we said three percent, but it's up to more than five percent. So five, so that's significant because the tuitions are high. On average, they're about a hundred and ten thousand per student and some being much higher than that.
And that's what we're trying to advocate for as districts across the state is that there's some sort of measure to regulate how much these increases can go year over year because we've seen some that in the last two or three years that have ballooned, um, you know, sixteen percent in their tuition costs.
Yep.
For the same service.
Sure.
Yeah, and we don't have recourse to say what's, what are the components of this tuition? You know, the child's placed there and that's the tuition that we are charged, yeah.
But in regards to special education costs other than outside tuition, that's on budget?
That's a different, different story. Um, no, that, let's see, so if you're talking about professional, the professional services, all the other house allocation centers, um, we're a little bit up in speech and language needs, for example, um, in this, in this, but, uh, we're a little bit up in, um, nursing costs. So nursing is very expensive. There's one more student, one more student, you know, puts us over on our nursing budget. So there are a few of the professional expense lines, um, that are higher than than what we originally budgeted, and that's the in-house services, those are the contracted services. But you have to remember that when we show you the board expenses, that's board expenses net of the reimbursed revenue. So if our revenue is lower, the expenses are gonna be higher.
Okay.
So you'd have to take the gross expense over time if you wanted to see what was happening there. Um, we are negotiating a a contract right now that we're hoping to get more favorable rates, um, with the town, um, in a special headline. Um, you know, it went out to bid and we go out to bid frequently on some of those services now as a result of some of the responses to the Board of Finance and.
I mean, there's just more kids getting services.
Sure. Well, that's, I guess that's the question, yeah.
They're identified.
There's more kids getting services statewide. We're, we're no different.
So that was kind of a question.
Prevalence rate continues to grow.
Volume of services need to be supplied, not separate than the tuition students that you know are going outside.
Yeah.
The services that are being supplied to the student.
Are increasing.
That we have, are they higher than what you anticipated in your budget from last year?
Maybe slightly because you never know, you know, we have a lot of new families that have moved into the district.
Yeah.
Um, so if they come with an IEP, we have to obviously honor it. Uh, we also have more kids that parents are unilaterally placing, and then we have to go through due process.
Yeah.
Um, so may, maybe slightly, yeah.
All right.
Um, we do see the trend, but we're hoping that it flatlines, but it's it's up near twenty percent right now.
Okay. Do you feel that, do you have any sense, either the board or the administration, that you feel that people move to this town because of the quality of special education services that we supply both in-house and we're willing to supply for tuition-based?
I I would say yes to the in-house. I don't think it has anything to do with what we're willing to supply because they would get the same, uh, out-of-district placement no matter where they were.
Well, it could be more of a fight though, correct?
Um, no, not really. I mean, the if the the burden of proof is on the district.
Yes.
And you have to show and, and it's it's hard to do. I mean, to to say that you can build or have a program that is equal to whatever the out-of-district unilateral placement. Um, I think we do have some of the best programs here in district. So I don't, there's not many other towns that can say they have better programming. So they would have a more difficult time to demonstrate that they have a program that meets the need of a child.
Well, that's the goal we tried to do pursuant to, uh, uh, May with department. But, yeah, Miss McCusie was to bring stuff in.
Yep.
And to have such a program.
Yep.
That we would send less people out for tuition-based, and that's working, correct?
It is working. We're starting to see the fruits of our labor, yes.
So but you believe that because of the quality of that service, we may be getting more people who may be moving to our district because of the quality versus what they might get in another town?
I don't know if that's necessarily the main factor. I think, uh, obviously, the school district has a reputation for being strong overall, but also in providing a well-rounded program for all kids. Um, but we do have really good in-house special education programs.
Well, prevalence rate is on par roughly with the state, where the state is. So if you look at the prevalence rate of the percentage of kids identified as needing services, we're on par with where the state is.
Okay. And I'm gonna make this quick, I hope. Um, the pension costs that you mentioned, that's what you described to us last quarter.
That's correct.
Correct. So there's no change in that. It hasn't gotten worse or better or.
No.
Any one that you explained to us.
Yeah, and even last year, we talked about it.
Yes, you did.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's all the questions I have, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Um, I I have one question, um, for either Ms. Laborious or Mr. Testani. With regard to making up the deficit of seven hundred thousand or so, uh, it'd be nice if utilities came in lower, but let's say they don't. What is the actual plan to deal with that? What types of costs can you cut back on to bring the overall budget back down to what was the approved appropriation?
Well, we've had, number one, we've had a couple of positions that have been open that we've been trying to fill in maintenance, that right now we've put a pause on that and we're moving and covering some of that. And we're gonna see how well that goes from now till the end of the year with overtime. So some of our overtime costs are gonna go up, but we're gonna realize the savings in some of the the salary and all of the, um, the benefit costs. Um, we're just.
But that's not seven hundred thousand dollars, I assume, right? So.
Oh, no, and again, we're looking at our sub-line. Same as we did last year, we were able to rein it in at at this time of the year. Um, we're having some difficult conversations with folks about that. Um, we need to make some adjustments, we will. And which jobs take priority in in the substitute coverage? We also have interns that, um, at the end of the second semester are more available for co- covering classes than they are in the first semester as part of the agreement with the university, so that'll reduce some of our sub-line as well.
Okay, yeah, the only, I mean, the only comment I have, and I'm sure I'm not telling you anything you haven't already thought about, but it seems like it might be risky to rely on utility savings, and there are only four months left in the year. So, um, whatever levers there are available to pull, it might be wise to start taking actions sooner rather than later. Um, okay, any other questions from the board on this item? All right, thank you, Mr. Testani, Ms. Laborious, Mr. Peterson. Good to see you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Oh, can I just say, uh, through the chair to the group, one last thing. We do have budget books here for you at the, on the table, um, with tapes on them. Yeah, okay.
Hey. That's one for you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move to item five, which is to reduce, I'm sorry, review the town fiscal year twenty-five Q-two financial update. So the backup for this item is posted online and it begins on page ninety-two. Uh, and I'm gonna see Mr. Harris, and I think that's Ms. Tossi. Um, welcome, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the package that we got. Um, appreciate the additional information in there. It was very well done, so thank you for that. And, um, turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the package reflects, uh, support from the entire finance team, so, uh, thanks to Caitlin and the and the team. In terms of the package, there are basically four parts to it. Uh, there's a narrative which, uh, really provides an overview of the financial pieces that we're gonna talk about. And it focuses on the revenue and expense, uh, variances in, uh, items that impact the, um, operations year-to-date and the outlook for the rest of the year. The other parts of it are a Excel extract which discusses the variances for individual accounts. Um, and those variances are based on guidelines provided by the Board of Finance. Um, basically, it's for items that bear off in budget by ten percent or more and that are equal to at least ten thousand dollars in value. Um, and then the the last package is the, um, vacancy report. So first, eh, on page two, if we look at where we think we're gonna be, uh, for the full year, uh, we're projecting a favorable yards or meaning revenues will exceed expenses by about one point, uh, six million dollars. Uh, about seven hundred and eighty thousand of that is in revenue and the balance is in expenses. And I'll discuss the the revenue piece first. Now, the, what does not contribute to variance, if you look at page four, is the, our general taxes. But if you look at the context of the revenue discussion, you know, revenues are budgeted to be about three hundred and sixty-nine, almost three hundred and seventy million dollars for the year. And as of the end of December, we had achieved roughly fifty-six, fifty-seven percent of the budget. But general taxes, we still are projecting to be on budget for the the full year. Uh, at the end, end of December, we collected about, uh, fifty-six percent of revenues for the full year. And, uh, through January, we've collected about seventy percent. But again, we're not projecting a, any variance in in general taxes. We are expecting to be on budget, and again, that's an item that accounts for about ninety, ninety-one percent of of total revenues. The, uh, significant variances, though, in terms of where the contribution is coming from is in licenses and permits, which is summarized on page five. And the larger items there are, uh, conservation, these are permits, uh, wetland permits, and these relate primarily to new construction projects. So that's about fifty thousand dollars of the variance. And the remaining three hundred and fifty thousand relates to, and we have it all in building permits, but a little bit of that really relates to ancillary items such as electrical permits, plumbing, et cetera. And those are attributed primarily to the the three large, uh, projects that are listed on on page five in in the memo. Uh, the other, uh, significant variance contribution in revenues is in, uh, service charges, which is summarized on page six. The bulk of that is in the Goffe area. Uh, a good chunk of it is in, uh, Smith Richardson. Uh, and and the balance is in the point recourse. And this is attributable primarily to, I guess, better weather, uh, during the fall. But I would guess that some of it is also due to enhancement at the driving range at, uh, Edsman Richardson. And then, uh, the other variances are down in the other recreational areas. Uh, I think for the most part, though, the remaining revenue items are gonna be pretty much online. If you look at where they are currently, you know, there are some significant variances, but that's all timing, especially in the, uh, in some of the, in some of the recreational areas. So in summary, uh, the, you know, the balance of the variances are explained in, uh, the section, the Excel section that has the variance analysis on it. So that's a a summary of where we think we're gonna be on revenue. Uh, I'll take any questions on that before I go into expenses, uh, if you have any.
Any questions from the board, um, Mr. Walsh?
Parking authority lease. Budget was for five hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. No.
Give me three thirty-three, no?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're right. Three hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. The fifty percent budget for the year would be one sixty-six, six forty-one, we should have received. To date, we've received zero.
Yeah.
What's going on there?
They have not.
You said in negotiation.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Can you fill us in on where those negotiations stand and what's going on?
Yeah.
We haven't received anything in a long time.
That is.
Been asking about.
Yeah, there's, it's, that's, uh, one of the talks that's being discussed at the RTM meeting now. Uh, there, there are discussions about really transferring sort of how that's managed. Uh, but that, you know, and a, uh, legal counsel has been involved. Uh, but that's gonna be, that's the the purpose of the discussion with the RTM tonight.
Okay.
And I think that, you know, when we have the meeting, certainly, uh, when we get into budget discussions, that that is something that we will be able to discuss. Uh, and and there likely would be an update from after the meeting, the RTM, possibly.
There's the questions I asked earlier tonight regarding who's being paid from what and when. You should be able to look that up, right, tomorrow on your computer and get those answers pretty fast?
We'll have that, I assure you, we will have that promptly.
Okay, because Mr. Becker said it'd take twenty-four hours, it's been forty-five days.
We'll have it to you.
Okay.
We'll have it to you.
I I appreciate it. Um, I'm really looking forward to working with you. At least we have somebody who's a CPA, so he's familiar with the doing in the position. So I appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to you being our clerk, so I appreciate that. And you've taken down what, um, matters that we have requested questions about. So I I have to say I'm really looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Uh, I will not disappoint you.
I don't think you will either.
Um, uh.
Okay.
Any other questions on the revenue?
Yeah, we can, uh, move on to expenses then if no one has.
Okay, in terms of expenses, there are really two, uh, significant items. And I'll I'll discuss the hard and hypertension first. Uh, that really is the result of a proposed, uh, change in how we plan to account for the costs, those costs. And I think it's something that was discussed, I believe, uh, at the end of the audit last year. But the plan will be to take these costs as well as a liability, related liability, which is about three point five million dollars, and transfer that to the internal, internal service fund. And the rationale for making the transfer is that the treat, accounting treatment would be consistent with how we treat for other medical costs. And I think that's also aligned with how other towns do it. So, um, that would, that's, uh, six hundred and thirty thousand is what we've got in, uh, kind of doing in terms of cost this year. And it said the the reserve that was on the balance sheet at the end of, beginning of la- this year was about five point six, uh, three point five million dollars. So, um, it's a little bit of reports. Uh, the other, uh, there are some overruns in terms of effective cost in arts and rec, uh, which is in line, is really, uh, in line with the anticipated additional revenue, uh, in the Goffe area. And the remaining, uh, savings is in vacancies, which is the last page of the report. And, uh, so the, the, the top section, oh, I'm sorry, before I go on, are there any, uh, other questions on the expenses that are discussed so far?
I have some questions about expenses, yeah, should I ask them now?
Uh, okay, sure, okay.
So, in human resources, this deals with vacancies as well. So we had budgeted for last year, an HR assistant for the salary of seventy-eight thousand, six eighty-six. We had budgeted one HR paralegal salary for seventy-eight thousand, six eighty-six. As of January two thousand twenty-five first, the HR assistant seems to have been replaced by a senior HR administrator. Does that's, what's the salary on that? I'd like to get to know what the salary for that senior HR administrator is. And does it exceed seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars?
I don't know, Hannah, do you have it? Okay, we can get that.
Further, the HR paralegal seems to have been replaced, but now there seems to be one HR analyst part-time. It was just, it's not a salary, if, if it's salary, let me know.
I mean, where, there is a part-time person there, but.
Is it salary by the hour?
I, I, I presume so.
Okay, you find out by the hour, okay. And then there's one FOI analyst part-time position. I presume it's by the hour, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do the two part-time salaries together exceed seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars?
I would have to check to.
Can you find that out? Because I'd like to know whether we're gonna be going over on that.
Okay.
Are all the new salaries of the new hires gonna come in under budget in the aggregate in the human resources department? As projected with, with these new hires?
Uh, you know, I would have to check, I don't know who the new hires are.
Yeah, if you could find out, that'd be great. The part-time line is currently over budget. The budget for the department that was approved was zero dollars for part-time employees. And currently, it stands, and there's, there's, there's a reference to it. It says, you know, it's over by fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars with an, with a comment that says, "Overage will offset favorability in regular salary line." Was that something the finance department determined? Have you guys determined that, or is that just something Kathleen, the HR director, is telling you?
This is, these are responses from the department here.
Okay. So we don't really know.
Yeah, I mean, I, the way, the way this works is, you know, when you're looking at how you think you're gonna perform the rest of the year, you know, you reach out to the people who are in charge of the operation.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think, and obviously, as we go through this, you know, you know, and, uh, through the next quarter, we have to look at where we are versus where we're this quarter and see where they are versus what they told us in terms of performance.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out, because the notes on the vacancy report date savings of twenty-eight thousand, six eighty-six using part-time. The money is, uh, the money is saved in the salary line, but it's being canceled out in the part-time line, so are we saving money, or are we not saving money?
Right now, but that would sound like it's pretty much.
Can you guys figure that out?
Sure.
Based on where we project to go by the end of the year?
Yeah, this is based on, uh, what we, where we think we'll be, uh, June thirtieth.
Okay, so you'll figure that out, get back to me? Okay, that'd be great.
Thank, Mr. Walsh, can I just follow up on your question and maybe it's for Caitlin?
Sure.
So when we're replacing full-time with part-time, we have a savings in, um, benefits as well, do we not?
Correct, I mean, we're self-insured, so our expenses naturally go down as we thought we have a full-time personnel with benefits. But with having two people without benefits, just by the nature of being self-insured, we would have less expenses.
Yeah. And, and what do we typically budget for our, for benefits? Is it twenty-five percent, something like that?
It's, it, it depends on the contract and who they are, but our blended rate is, is close to that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, other questions on expenses?
I have some, but if somebody else can go if they want. I don't wanna control the conversation, but I have more questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, under administrative services. The Board of Finance has zeroed part-time help on this line, as we all remember we did last year, and moved this amount to the first selectman's office. But now, under part-time payroll, under administrative services, there's now an amount there, which I was shocked to see, that there'd be anything, for four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That is, uh.
What is that for?
Some of this part of us.
Because we zeroed it out, Tom, you weren't here in the last year.
No, I wasn't, but part of that cost is for, uh, individuals who take minutes for board meetings.
Okay. Okay, so it's nothing to do with anybody like that's in, part-timers that are in the first selectman's office at all?
Not at all, yeah.
I think that could have been a part-timer in there prior to, no, maybe not, double look.
Can you look in, if, if so, I'd like to know who's been paid out of there and what they were paid for? Thank you. In the fire department. Are we still paying Chief Dennis McCarthy a full-time salary?
Uh, the chief, yes, yeah.
We're, we're still paying him a full-time salary?
As far as I know, we, we are.
Wow, okay, but yet we've hired the deputy Kyle Dunn. Here, I'm sorry, here, here and Dunn. And we're paying him ten percent more than we were paying the pre, the, the chief to be intern chief? How's that even possible?
I don't know, is it, is that true?
I don't know, can you find out whether it's true?
Yeah, we can find out, yeah.
Okay. It seems to be common knowledge that he's getting ten percent more. Okay, and then to backfill for Kiran's position as deputy, we've now promoted two assistant chiefs to deputy chiefs. I don't know why. Why two people, why it takes two people to do one person's job, but I'd like to know why. Will you find that out?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, and, um, the two deputy chiefs seem to be getting ten percent more than the prior deputy chief, can you confirm that? And the reason why? Now, um, now the town must, uh, fill two vacant assistant chiefs positions with lieutenants, which creates a domino effect in the, uh, that leaves the fire department positions open, which I presume are being paid with overtime by the other lieutenants. Can we find out whether that's the case?
We will check, yes.
Okay. The, uh, this is increases overtime costs. I mean, and when I look at the vacancy line for the overtime in fire department, it's over, is that the reason? So there's a line for, um, I wish I had all the documents, but, um, your normal documents, which are in the backup, I appreciate that. But for some reason, Jen didn't copy all that like she normally does, like we have, we have nothing at the table.
Okay, well, that's.
So, so, we need to get that for the next time, but that's Jen, that's Jen.
I think that's right.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Normally, I'd have it all highlighted, but it's not, but it's, it's not there, um, and I will talk to Jen and tell her, work with our, our chairperson to find out why it wasn't there, why it isn't here.
Just to know, so, yeah.
So, the, do we have a line, we have a line for, um, for a vacancy overtime?
We have, um, a bunch of overtime lines.
What's the vacancy over, overtime?
I believe it's vacation.
It's vacation?
That, that people are backfilled due to vacation.
Okay.
There's a sick, there's an injury, there's a business, there's a training.
Is that over? I mean, we're, we're at eighty-one point eight percent, correct?
Which, which line?
Are you talking about, what line are you talking about?
There's a whole bunch of lines here, and you can see what percentage they've used as of December. I see one line is over, I just, if I wanna look at like fifty percent being over, I, I do see one of them.
There's, there's, there's.
But there's a multiple, there's a whole bunch of them that are way under, there are forty-five percent, forty-one percent, thirty-three percent, so.
The comment says they're under budget by forty-two thousand.
Yeah.
In the aggregate.
Right.
Yeah, but are they, what's the reason for the vacation o, overtime, I'd like to know? Why is it so high when we're fifty percent through the year, but yet we're eighty-one percent spent?
I mean, we, I normally look at these in the aggregate, because I don't wanna say that they're subjective, but, you know, overall, the, yeah, there's someone out, someone has to get filled, why is the person out? I mean, these kinda give the reasons, but.
Okay, I would like to know if you could find out from the fire department on a fiscal basis, whether we're absorbing extra overtime by lieutenants to cover the extra hours now that two lieutenants have been promoted. And if so, what lines that on? Okay.
Well, that would be vacancy relief, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but, so what we did for the vacancy for the fire and police, because it was a full-time vacancy that's covered with overtime, I, I look at those and I net out unless I know there's gonna be a big.
On administrative services as well, there seems to be a large rental and storage increase, because it's up five hundred and forty-five percent.
That's the least copiers, I haven't got a report to allocate much to the department.
Oh, so they will, they'll, they'll just go out to the departments?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Emergency management, why is it fifty percent used, it's already over budget by a hundred and, it's up to, it's at a hundred and seven percent, we're only fifty percent through the year?
I believe the one-time cost for the CMed, it's like their software is, is, they've got someone, um.
There's also a CMed line that's one hundred percent expended as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
No, I'm talking about this line right here, where it's regular payroll within the emergency management department, and it's already a hundred and seven percent spent.
Oh, you can't look at these encumbrances.
Okay.
Due to Paycom, um, that encumbrance number as of December is not accurate, which is why we did the vacancies before, it's kind of, um, we updated it as of January, we couldn't get it back to December due to the Paycom inflation. So that encumbrance number is not.
Not accurate?
No.
Okay. Thank you. They used to be, is it gonna be corrected by the next quarter?
Well, we have to manually do it now, so we do it, uh, not as frequently as we'd like to.
We're, we're working on it.
Why is it, I thought we were supposed to be getting more efficient, is there a reason why that's the case, why it has to be manually done?
Well, it's an outsourced payroll before we were in-house, and so every time you ran a payroll, it would automatically.
Yeah.
Look at the encumbrances, so now we are, we're importing our expenses, so it's, it's a different animal right now.
That sounds efficient. Okay, uh. Okay, in your own department, the budget director was reclassified, right?
Are you in the vacancy report, or no?
Well, it's all, isn't it all part of the same thing, or no?
Well, the positions are on the vacancy report, is what I.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that, I'll, I'll hold that. Are we saving money, um, moving to the new payroll system? Or is it costing us more money?
I haven't seen the contract, I, I can't answer that.
What do you mean?
I haven't seen, I don't know what we're paying.
Where's it hitting?
HR fees.
HR fees.
Before the seventy-five thousand was, that was budgeted for the time and attendance system.
Yes, that's where it was budgeted. We have no idea whether, where.
I don't, I'm sure there's a contract that's signed, so I, I haven't looked at, we're paying a, a.
Now, can you make a, uh, presentation to the Board of Finance, and I'm gonna ask that the ma, Madam Chairwoman, you make time for that, um, to get us an update on the entire payroll system? We've asked for it before, they were supposed to present to us on where this all stood.
I don't, I don't recall that we did ask for it before, but glad to get an update. In fact, um, I, I think, uh, we should cover this, Tom, during the budget, I assume there will be, fees associated with it, and also some personnel changes as well, and so, uh, since our budget hearings are starting in two weeks, uh, that would be a good time to do it.
All right, and if, uh, the HR director can be prepared to talk about it as well.
Okay.
Because I'll have some questions to her about it as well.
And I think those are the only questions I have.
Okay, any other?
On the, on the vacancy report, I have questions, but, okay. Are we going to that?
Does anybody else have questions on expenses? Okay.
No, I, I don't have questions, but just if we're gonna do a, uh, if we're gonna do like a meeting on, on the payroll system, I guess just have, you know, be able to give some commentary on what the, what the inefficiencies were, and like quantify them, if with people being overpaid, for example, or stuff like that, and speak, speak to that.
Yeah, I think, uh, let me just back up on that, we had an entire audit done on the previous payroll system. There was a report issued by our external auditor, uh, it was presented to the audit subcommittee. Uh, I don't recall whether it was distributed to the whole board, but it's certainly available, and I, I think that speaks for itself, so I'd be happy to get that out to everyone.
Yeah.
There are, there, and by the way, there are also have been some internal audits that touch on the subject, um, and the numerous issues that we have. So I think where it ended up was that the amount of cost and effort it would take to address the findings in those reports was not practical. It would probably require several people, and that prompted the decision to move to the outsourced model. So I'll, um, I'd be happy to get those to the board, but they are, uh, as I said, the audit subcommittee did, um, did review these and, and they are available. Any, uh, any other questions before we get to the further ones on the vacancy report? Okay.
Okay, couple of things, uh, I wanna point out on the vacancy report is, in, uh, parks, we have a favorable variance, and I think the first selectman, uh, noted this earlier, and there's a, a negative variance down in engineering, those offset. And the plan would be to request the transfer, uh, probably at March, uh, for the transfer for parks. So in terms of, you know, looking at where we think we're gonna be in terms of positions that still are open, and, you know, obviously, that's kind of a guess in terms of the timing of when those are gonna be filled versus, uh, versus looking at, uh, the positions that have been filled, and there was a savings during the year, uh, right now, those net out to about four hundred and three thousand dollars. So those are the significant, uh, the two significant items, this item and hardened hypertension that contributed to the estimated expense savings. Uh, you know, there are other variances throughout, uh, other accounts, and those are summarized in the, uh, extract from the Excel report that I mentioned earlier. So if you have any other questions?
The note, um, on the, uh, for the, um, Director of Financial Planning and Analysis.
Mm-hmm.
The budget, it says it's budgeted at one twenty-seven, and then it's, what is it, what do you mean posted at one forty-five? Is that, is that?
It's an open position, uh, uh, this is the position that, um,
Frank?
Frank was in. Uh, and that has been open, uh, we have been trying to, we're trying to fill that. But when you're looking at the market, that's, you know, kind of the reason that we would expect to, to come in at. Yes, sir.
Once you fill that position, um, because the, the budget director's salary was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars as budgeted, correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay, and you're seeking that you're gonna pay the person a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
That's what we have it posted for.
Okay. You believe that, um, anticipate that a transfer will be necessary to cover, um, the budgeted salaries?
Yes, possibly.
In your finance department?
Possibly, possibly.
Okay, why? Because you have had, Frank's not been there for a while.
Well, we do have, we would use that as an offset, uh, but mechanically, if, if, if you wanna say that, you know, there was. you know, there was a position that was filled and we're going to pay a high salary, if that requires a transfer mechanically, then there would be.
Okay.
But then if, if we can just net the savings and.
And you're using a person from Board of Ed, correct, that is kind of assisting us part-time?
Correct.
How much is she getting paid?
Sixty-five.
Sixty, sixty-five thousand?
An hour.
Sixty-five an hour? Okay. And do you anticipate, I, I, I presume Frank was making more than sixty-five an hour, correct?
Well, he was making whatever, one twenty-seven, divide that.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Uh, but you still, do you believe that there's going to be a transfer necessary in your department?
Well, maybe, you know.
Okay. Other, other than the positions that are supposed to be in your department, has any, um, salary or any type of part-time or anything hit your department from people that are really not in your department?
Well, that's what, what we're going to find out from what Phil said, that when we, to see if there was any salaries.
Yeah, he said, yeah, he may have been, yeah, he said there may have been someone in there for one day.
Okay.
That's what we're going to.
Okay. Anybody else other than, um, well, I guess my question, other than the people we discussed tonight that are in that Capital Projects, Department?
I believe David Becker.
Capital Projects Group, anybody else, um, has, has hit your department up till today? That is not budgeted for?
I don't know, where's David? But I mean, I can, nothing's changed since I have been.
Wait, wait, COO is being paid out of finance too?
Yeah, because he was intern, so I believe he's hitting finance. We can get you that back up.
Okay, but he's not in the finance department, the COO. The COO was.
Who's the interim CFO?
Okay, up until you're, right, you replaced him, right. But once you replaced him, has the salary now moved to the first selectmen's department?
I would guess not. I'm assuming it has not been.
Has not been moved?
That's, I don't know, I'm, I'm going to guess it's not.
Why, why would we be getting somebody who doesn't, not in your department?
I guess, I guess.
Not budgeted, a COO, and, and why wouldn't they be moved to the first?
Okay, why don't, why don't we get the answer on that?
Yeah, I guess we can, we can, we can look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, it's just a little odd that no.
I, I guess I, I kind of look at, you know, right now I'm concerned net, yeah, net dollar impact, there's no net dollar impact. And I know that in the day, we need to get it in the right bucket, so, uh, if there's a need for a transfer or need for a change, then we'll make the change.
Yeah, I mean, Tom, you've worked at companies, corporations, right? It really wouldn't make sense for somebody who you've replaced them.
Yeah.
And now they're, and now they're moving into a new role.
I agree, but in the short, your budget. Yeah, I, in the short term, you know, concerned about the net dollar impact, whether there's an increase or decrease. You want to hold, hold the dollars even to the extent you can, and you, I agree that you want to get the dollars into the right bucket.
Yeah, because this board of finance has to make those transfers. So if you know that's going to happen, we should be making those, those dollar transfers like next month. We should be making them next meeting.
Then we will do that, then we'll.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't wait till the end.
No, we'll do that.
Because, no, I'm just saying, because the way we work here as a municipality is, you shouldn't be.
Jim, hang on, we're going to, we're going to do transfers in the March meeting. Tom had mentioned that earlier, so let's, you know, to the extent there are transfers, and I know that there is one planned for the transfer between Parks and Rec and the engineering department. There's anything else related to personnel, I had previously asked that it come to us no later than the March regular meeting before the budget. So that's what we'll do. So let's, let's move on.
I guess, Tom, I guess it's okay. Any other, uh, questions?
I had a question about the, the, uh, fire, uh, the firefighter and the police officer lines. I think I probably just started reading this crap. But is it, so, is the salary for one firefighter or two firefighters?
Each. Um, the starting salary for a step one firefighter is seventy-four thousand.
Okay, so this, so it would be twice that amount.
Yeah, so they're still open now. I mean, not for the full year, obviously that's a yearly salary, so there's timing and, um, same with the police officers.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up question.
Sure.
So just, um, I know you're going to get the information, but based on what you just said about when you guessed that the budget might still be there, it just sounded to me like, um, it was left in that budget because there might be room in that budget.
Which one are you?
For the CFO budget. It sounded like it, it was left, we can get the answer, but I, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, but it sounded like you just kind of left, it might be left there because there was room, because you had it.
You mean in terms of David Becker?
Yes.
Amy, I just, I've been focused on so many things. That is something I really hadn't thought about is to where, whether we need to transfer his salary.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think there are more significant things that, that, that needs to be addressed.
So we'll get the full report then, just looking at that.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Rogero, I, I, I would think about it differently. I, I think there's actually, there should be room in the first selectmen's budget because the, the budget for the COO was there, um, in the budget. And since Mr. Becker was filling two roles for at least half the year and his salary was being paid out of the finance department, we have, we had a savings in the first select person's department for the COO role, so, um, whether they've administratively transferred it now, I'm sure it'll be transferred as of the day it was effective, but I, I, I think there would be room there versus in the finance department.
Yeah, I mean, I would almost think there'd be room in both because of the, you know, even Frank and just lots of different heads being out.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you have all these churn numbers there, but.
I just wanted to make sure because the way you said it, I wasn't sure, I, I.
No, you, you, what the, yeah, you look at.
I wasn't sure how you, like, the way you said it, and I appreciate you're brand new and you're learning the roles, I'm not trying to, you know,
I know, I know.
Give you a hard time at all. I just wanted to make sure, and I would just expect that given, you know, we have room in both because he was filling.
And, and that's what I'm going to say, there's, yeah, it's.
Looking down at his salary, you can have a, a loss, and Frank, and I think there's probably room in both countries.
Right.
We'll see it in the full, full view. Thank you.
Okay, can I ask you a question in regards to the vacancies? Do we have a, a, a risk management? A mid-risk manager?
Uh, we, the, the function is in HR. The discussion that we're having is, is about getting someone who can really do the job as a risk manager. There is no one, uh, um, you know, there's no one with the skill set to do what needs to be done.
So we have somebody without the skill set to do the job, doing the job?
We have someone who administers the function. I think there's a lot of rely, there, there has been reliance on, um, the insurance agent to provide assistance where it was needed. Uh, I mean, the individual who's in the function does, uh, you know, he can oversee the ocean kind of issues. Uh, but in terms of some of the broader issues, I think we need, uh, we're looking to have a different skill set there.
Okay. Because Connie Saxel did a internal audit in regards to certificates of insurance, correct? It was done on November twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-four. And, uh, she stated, um, and there's an email from Ms. Simpson, um, to Ms. Saxel dated June tenth of two thousand twenty-four. In which it says, hi Connie, I have no issue with your findings and recommendations, meaning in the audit. I, I agree with them. Some work, however, as we discussed, the town does not have a risk manager or a risk management committee. And attaches Peter's job description. So we've been going an entire, we're getting close to working up, we're probably two-thirds of the way there to the issuance of this email in June, and we still don't have a risk manager or somebody who's trained to do risk management for the town of Fairfield. As almost a four hundred million dollar corporation, we don't have that.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, my only comment is the last administration got rid of the risk manager, so maybe you forgot about that, Jim.
I haven't forgotten about it, but in, in the last year and a half almost now, the current first selectmen has decided not to do, go that route anyway.
Well, I don't think that's true.
And I'm, and I'm just concerned that regardless of what administration is, whatever party it is, that we need a risk manager.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Right, so this is a question that we should, you know, I, I hope then that if this position is in the budget, that the board is supportive because it's not just the certificate of insurance audit, there's also a vehicle audit that raised a number of issues and pointed to the lack of a risk manager. I think it was a mistake to, uh, eliminate that position. When Ms. Simpson came on board, the idea was she thought that the assistant HR director could absorb those duties, but it seems to be clear now that we have a problem and we need someone in that role, uh, or the duties somehow need to be reorganized so that that function gets taken care of, so. Um, I assume the first selectmen will address this during the budget process because we all knew last year that a position was not added to the budget to replace the one that was, um, eliminated, and the reason we got was that those duties would be absorbed by the assistant HR director. Now, I know he's got a lot of things on his plate, and if that's not the adequate staffing, then we should talk about that during the budget. Um, other questions, Ms., is that Ms. Rogero?
Yes.
Or Ms.? Okay.
Yes, it is. Can, I just want to ask a general question, but as a, a member of the, this board, and there's at least two others that are new, uh, since the previous administration, I don't know why we spend so much time, this is, several times it's even come up this evening, talking about the previous administration to use and set a precedence as if that's the way we should march on. I find it infuriating that that's the constant comment back as if it's okay, actually. Like, are we here to do a job or are we here to play a political hot potato game of accusing others?
That's a good question.
Honestly.
That's a great question. That's a really good question.
And maybe, 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 some of you could look in the mirror, some of you guys.
I'm asking a question.
It's a great question, Amy.
I mean, I mean, we, we spent a lot of time, we spent a lot of time asking questions that are gently related to the items on here, but sometimes it feels like we're giving each other bruises, and I think all of us are pretty committed actually to doing a good job. I think we are. I think you guys are all really smart people. Boy, I mean, s- some of this stuff just seems, I think we're better than it.
Yeah, I, I would like to not act like a prosecutor when people are asking questions. That'd be more appropriate.
Yeah, I, I, um, and I, I think you're right, Ms. Rogero. I, I don't think there's any, um, value in that, but we're, we're, you know, this board should take some responsibility too. I mean, if we want to produce a budget that is the lowest possible number, then we won't add a risk manager. If we want to all sit here and acknowledge that based on what we've heard, this is something that's necessary and important to the town, then we have to support it. So when the position was eliminated, I think it was done in good faith on the basis that it wasn't, we did, we had a full-time person there, and the belief was that that wasn't a full-time role. And obviously that hasn't worked out. So we've seen it done both ways, and now there's going to be an opportunity to figure out how to move forward. And that's how I see it. You know, we, um, you know, I used to hear Mr. DeWitt say this, that he thought when he came on the board, his job was to save every penny possible and, you know, get the mill rate as low as possible. And what you learn over time is that that's not always the right answer because there's a consequence to cutting expenses sometimes. And so, um, I hope there's a solution to this that's put before us in the budget process, and if not, we should continue to ask these questions because these risks are going to come back to bite us at some point.
Do we know if that position is being added in? Do, do you?
I have not seen the budget, um, so I think we're going to have to wait. I assume it's going to be released, uh, this, the end of this week because I believe the selectmen starts their hearings next week, so we'll see.
I will say, I think it's a balancing act, and I think we've got to, of this board, make hard decisions on what we think is the most valuable use of funds. So personally, to me, I'll give you an example. I believe that a risk manager is very important. Probably because I was a litigator once in my life and I've worked with risk managers. Uh, like, but I think a risk manager for a town our size is worth more than a PR person. And that we might have to make balancing act decisions on what to spend the money on. What's the best use of the money?
Everybody agrees on that, yeah.
For, for the taxpayers, but we will have to see how this budget comes out.
I mean, it's a question of priorities there, right? I mean, and I think, I think there's developing consensus here. Frankly, I think there was last budget, the only budget I've been on, that a risk manage, a risk manager was a huge, huge hole.
It was.
A huge hole. And so there's consensus on it. We're already making consensus.
Yes.
And, yeah, we're going to have different priorities, but that's, that's what it's about. I'm, I just, anyhow, we, we, we can move on. I think everybody here has really productive, great stuff to add. I hate it that we get when we go down these spirals. It's, it's just, it seems like, you know, that's not what people in the town want us to be doing and, and, um, yeah, that's it. I, but I appreciate everybody's input, I really do. Yours too, Jim, especially. You ask great questions. Um, you, you know, you're, you're, I was, I was a lawyer too. I know you can get into, we all have a mode of, of, uh, of questioning things, yeah. Um, anyhow.
Um, any other questions on expenses? Okay, Tom, is there anything else that, um, you want to highlight for the quarterly review?
No, I think that, uh, that covers it.
Well, thank you, and I just, I didn't take notes, I trust you did, on the follow-up questions, so just please, if you can respond through me and I'll distribute any, uh, answers to the board. Thank you.
And if you have any questions, if you want to clarify them with me, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, great job. I, I liked the new report, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on since we, uh, heard item six before. We're going to move to item seven. And this is to hear, consider, and act upon changes to the Board of Finance Fund Balance Policy and Policy on Debt Issuance. Uh, so can I have a motion to hear this item? Uh, Ms. Rogero, second, Mr. Curly. Okay. Uh, the backup for this item begins on page, uh, do I have this right? Is it page seventy? No, that's not right. Um, let's see.
One fifty-two, one fifty-two, Laura.
One fifty-two, thank you, Craig. Okay, so the backup for this item begins on page one fifty-two, and for the board and for the public, this agenda item proposes to make changes to two Board of Finance policy statements, our fund balance policy, which was last updated eleven years ago in two thousand fourteen, and our policy on debt issuance, which was last updated fourteen years ago in two thousand eleven. Uh, these proposed changes were approved by the Fund Balance, Debt Service, and Borrowing Subcommittee of this board, which I chair and serve on along with Ms. Rogero and Mr. Curly. Um, so if it's okay with everyone, we can take these one thing, one at a time. Uh, they are redlined, but I will, uh, just briefly review the changes and then maybe we can vote on each one individually, if that's okay with everyone. All right, so, um, before I do that, just checking to see if there's any public comment on this item. And I do not see any, okay. All right, so, starting with the fund balance policy, which is on page one fifty-two, these changes are very minor. First, you'll notice we specified throughout the document that this fund balance policy relates to the general fund. And we made that clarification because at a future date, we do want to potentially look at developing policies for the Internal Service Fund, fund balance. And the WPCA is also looking to develop fund balance, a fund balance policy for that entity, so this is just clarification. Uh, second, under the guidelines section on page three of the policy, which is page one fifty-four of the PDF, we updated the recommended range of fund balance as a percent of general fund expenditures. In the existing policy, the range is seven and a quarter to eleven percent, and the subcommittee is proposing to change that to a range of nine to twelve percent. Uh, board members may recall, we are now at eleven point seven five percent, which is above our existing policy guidance, and we've been striving to stay flat at that level. So this is not a big change, but it makes our current level consistent with the policy. Uh, and just for everyone's reference, the new floor of the policy at nine percent is based on the benchmarking analysis that was provided by Phoenix Advisors, and it represents the lowest percentage of any of our peer group. So we concluded that, uh, our floor should not be, uh, below the lowest level of our peer group, and so that's where the nine percent came in. Um, and then lastly, on page four of the policy, which is one fifty-five of the PDF, um, we updated the language around how we keep fund balance at a consistent level. So the existing policy states that we, uh, shall budget for surplus to increase fund balance every year so that as budgeted expenditures increase, we can stay at a flat percentage. Uh, we frequently refer to this as the hold harmless policy. Uh, the reality is that in the past several years, we. The reality is that in the past several years, we've not been following this. Uh, precise guidance. Instead, we've um. Rather than budgeting for. Surplus, we've fun, we've replenished the fund balance through general fund surpluses at the end of the year. So this language memorializes what's been our current practice, and it gives us some flexibility on how to maintain that whole. Harmless level of fund balance. We can do it through the budget, we can do it through an alternative approach like surplus, but we want to. Keep the concept of hold harmless uh intact. And continue to maintain our fund balance level. So those were. As I said, these these changes I view as very minor, it's uh, yeah, I, as. As we read through the policy, I I all, I think we all agreed that it was well constructed in the past and it served us well, and so we didn't want to change too much, but. We did think it needed this, these minor refreshes. Are there any questions from the board? Is that Mr. Meyer? Yes.
Yes. Well, I have a question. I thought the last board meeting. We got the uh, an updated presentation on um where we were against our peers, and there was one town. That I thought was around nine or ten percent. Uh, percentage fund balance, and they were downgraded. Was, if I remember correct on that?
Was that, that was West Hartford.
Right.
Yeah, I don't remember if they were the um. If they were the lowest on fund balance, but I think that. The, yeah, I don't remember if they were the one. I don't, Mr. Matola, do you remember?
I I think you're right about that, but I think they were, one of the reasons why they were downgraded was their debt was extremely high.
Yeah, it wasn't a fund balance issue.
It was off the, it was the highest.
Yes, I don't remember, but I remember the debt number being like way off the charts, so that could be like a one-year thing.
Because the nine percent for the low, to Lori's point, having worked on the committee, we saw um, and we shared what our peers were. And we were at seven and a half percent, much lower than seven percent. Um, so it did seem in line with our peer group. The seven two five seemed very low.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Mr. Walsh?
I did attend some of the earlier meetings, but not the later meetings, and I'm just not sure. How you came up with on the third page um, under guidelines. Um, having the ceiling be twelve percent, because as you probably, as you all saw. Many of the triple A communities are well above that. There's many writings that say that a town. Especially one that's exposed to potential flooding damages from like a hurricane. Like we sustained in Storm Sandy. Um, should be closer or at fifteen percent. And I'm just wondering why we're just putting the. You know, setting it, we've raised the other uh percentage, which appropriately, I believe, seven point two five to nine percent. I would. Even be. You know, I think I would have been comfortable with ten percent even, but you know, why we would be setting a floor. Um, I'm I'm not looking to um have extra. Interest charges or moving further money over there right away, but we don't have to hit the ceiling. So, uh, I just wonder whether you can give. Myself and the rest of our board members who were not attending the meeting some some flavor for that.
Yeah, and 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 by the way, Jim, I. You didn't miss anything. I think we vote. When we voted on this, you were at that last meeting. Subsequent meetings were on different topics for the WPCA, but in any event, I think. The thought process. Um, and I invite my my colleagues to jump in on this, is that for the past several years at least. The board has been sticking to the hold harmless policy, and we have not. Made, or I haven't heard anybody signal any intention to increase the level of fund balance. That's a, obviously, it's an addition, it 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 costs money to the taxpayer just to hold harmless. To start increasing it to higher percentages would cost taxpayers more. And I think. The question is whether that really benefits anybody. Um, once we. Once we put money into fund balance. There's always been a great reluctance reluctance to take it out because of how that might be viewed. We've been lucky in the past couple of years that we're earning some interest on that money, but for many years we didn't. And because we have. You know, had everything aligned in terms of all the other criteria that go into our triple A rating, I just. I mean, listen, we could put a ceiling at whatever we want, but when it comes down to it, the question is whether. We're gonna be willing to ask taxpayers for more money just to increase fund balance, and at least in the past. Five years I've been on this board, we have. More or less maintained it um steady, so there really wasn't any thought process be beyond that. We had seven and a half to eleven. Uh, we tweaked it a little bit, uh, we didn't think. That there was a need to make dramatic changes, so um Craig or Amy, if you want to die, jump in and give your perspective, but that's. That's the conversation that I think we had.
I agree with that. I mean, we talked about the nine being below because that gives tied into our peer group and the twelve not taking it higher. Do you have a, would you have recommended taking it higher?
I would have recommended just a higher ceiling in case we wanted to do that. I'm not that I'm seeking to do it, but we're not even getting up to the twelve percent. We're not, we're stopping exactly and funding it to the number that we've had for the last several years. And that's been a decision by this Board of Finance to do every single year. So, but it doesn't mean that the ceiling can't be, the range can't be higher than that, because currently, as you want to change it. It is going to be higher than the eleven point two five percent. You could have made it.
Yeah, no, I, I I mean, listen, we, this is guidance. We have been above eleven, our policy's been at eleven percent, and we've been above that for quite a number of years, so it's it's not like anybody's gonna go to jail if we decide to. Get it over twelve percent here, but. Um, you know, we didn't. You know, from what we hear from our financial advisor, policies are important, being consistent with our policies is important. And this is just meant to tweak it a little bit, to align it to what we've actually been doing. If we wanted to go higher with that. Uh, for some reason, um, then, you know, again, this is just guidance, it's, nobody's saying we can't, we have done that, but. It did not seem likely. Mr. Matola?
I think, I understand what Jim's saying, but I think they'll alleviate. Any concerns. Our policy does say every two years, the Board of Finance Fund Balance Committee may may reconvene. You know, ma- maybe we, a friendly amendment, we say shall reconvene, so they can look at it every two years. Because I think we've gotten a little, am I wrong about this? We've been a little lazy looking at this, it's been eleven years.
Yes, we've, we've, the, the, we have, we've had a fund balance pal, uh, committee, but. It's, this was the first year that the committee was active and. And actually revisited this policy. I I think I only recall one meeting ever. In years prior to that, so I I think that's a good idea, John. I mean, if we are reconvening every two years, that is a. Good way to continue to reevaluate this, and we can also, you know, refresh the benchmarks against our peer group.
I mean, if you're comfortable that the, I would, a friendly amendment would be to change the may reconvene, the shall reconvene, so. We have to force ourselves to look at this every couple of years, and then, Jim, you're right, if maybe every two years, we might.
John, John, I'll second you on your your friendly amendment, um, and then I will withdraw my. My uh concerns, uh, because I'll know that it'll be looked at in two years.
Um, any questions or comments on that motion? Okay, and so, John, just to be.
Amy's raising her hand, Chairwoman.
I was just wondering, I was just asking what page that was on. I didn't see it on the document.
Oh, shall, okay.
The shall. I was looking to see if it was in the last paragraph, John, do you know where you're seeing that?
It's uh at the top of page four, where it says, at the very top.
Above the circumstances in which the general fund, the sum of all its given expense, but paragraph above that.
The budget, maybe shall.
Yeah, that's, no, that's not.
No, that's not.
That's not reconvening, that's just the way we found.
I'm finding the.
I think here in the middle.
Right there?
Of page four.
Oh, yeah, I see it. Every two years. May reconvene, I see it, so you're gonna change that to shall.
Okay, so. Yep, and so I'll just, um, so the the motion is to. Finance will receive a report on fund balance yearly at its fourth quarter review meeting. Every two years. The Board of Finance's Fund Balance Committee shall reconvene in order to determine whether the fund balance policy needs to be updated or revised in any way. Okay, any comments on that? Okay, can we vote on the amendment? All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Say aye, okay, it is unanimous. Any other comments on the policy? Okay, if not, we can take it to a vote. Uh, all in favor of the policy as amended. Um, please raise your hand. Okay, that looks unanimous. All right, thank you, everyone. Mr. Harris.
Lori, can we get a final copy?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I, is Tom is off camera, is Tom still there?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, great, so, Mr. Harris, can I ask a favor? Can you arrange to have this document finalized by. Um, making that one final change, accepting the marked changes, and then. Have it posted to the Board of Finance website page to replace the old policy?
Uh, yes.
And I'd also like to ask that our recording secretary include the finalized version of this policy in the minutes to this meeting. Okay.
And just let us know when you do that, maybe send a hard copy to all members. That'd be terrific.
Yeah, and just so everyone knows, these these two policies are on the website on the Board of Finance page, so. Um, they've, they've always been there, but um, if you're ever, if you ever can't find it or are looking for it, it does, it does live there, okay. All right, so we're gonna next move to the policy on debt issuance, which begins on page one fifty-seven of the posted backup. Uh, this is our our policy on debt issuance, which drives that ten percent limitation that we regularly discuss. And it has an addendum that lays out guidance on what types of capital expenditures qualify for bonding. So, um, again, I'll just review, it's redlined, but just to review the thinking here, the most substantive change here. And we've talked about this quite a bit over the last couple of years. Is to memorialize this concept of net debt. Which simply means that when we're measuring debt service as a percentage of general fund expenditures. We're only going to include the debt service that's actually paid from the general fund and not from the W, not the WPCA debt, which is paid by the WPCA. So when we measure the ratio against our ten percent policy, we're including consistent numbers in the numerator and denominator, and we're measuring the actual impact on. The future mill rate, uh, future mill rates and taxes. Um, I, if you, if you look at the footnote that's marked, the important thing we've specified in making this change is to. Ensure that any debt that's assigned to the WPCA and out of the ratio will actually be paid by the WPCA. So, as the board knows, every time we assign debt to the WPCA, we legalize that obligation through an MOU. But what this policy also clarifies is that we not only need an MOU, we would require the commitment. Uh, to be supported by a long-term financial plan that demonstrates the WPCA actually has the financial ability. To pay the debt service from its own revenues over the life of the bond. So, um, on that note, the town and the WPCF leadership have drafted a long-term financial plan. Uh, the subcommittee has reviewed two drafts of it. Thus far, we've provided feedback, which is being incorporated into the plan. And which will be going before the WPCA Commission this week, and will be presented to the Board of Finance at our next regular meeting. Uh, along with the capital plan and updated waterfall. Um, and then just one other quick thing, the only other substantive change in this policy was to increase the threshold for capitalizing purchases. From a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, and that update just. Reflects the fact that the hundred thousand dollar threshold hasn't been changed in fourteen years, so. Uh, that is a summary of. What, what is marked as changes here and. Would love to hear the board's feedback and any questions. Jim?
Um, question, I guess, has, based on these changes that are made, how does that affect what the. What number we're at, getting close to the ten percent? So you take out, if you take out. I'm sure your board looked at this, if you take out, like, can you give me an example of where we are right now before the change? And where with this definitional change, we are immediately thereafter, because. I I'd like to know what that additional borrowing capacity changes to.
Yeah, so, I don't. I don't remember. Where we are without it, I think, and and we're gonna have to see the updated capital plan. Um, in March, but last I saw, and I think you missed the last meeting, but when they presented it at the last meeting, I want to say it was around. Nine percent or just shy of nine percent. So, um. And and the, the waterfalls that we've been looking at throughout the year have basically been prepared on this basis. So we always assumed that a certain amount of debt would be paid by the WPCA. Um, but that's sort of been a guess, so what the long-term financial plan for the WPCA is doing is actually. Layering in the debt service into their financials along with all their other revenue and expense assumptions. So that those actual, you know, we, you can see what they will actually be able to absorb. And um, and they're developing a policy. Um, which, you know, we we will also bring to this board for review. Uh, and we talked about it, the subcommittee, to determine. How costs get split between the WPCA and the town for certain types of projects. Does that answer your question?
No, because I don't know what that reduces it to. Does it reduce to seven, and now we have three percent additional borrowing we can do because WPCA is.
No, it reduces it to about nine, I think, based on the last version I saw. So we, that that capital plan, again, we're gonna get an update. And it's gonna be tweaked, but that was one of the big issues that we had, right, was understanding how the WPCA debt would affect. Our ratios and affect the town, and so with the WPCA able to carry the debt. Based on the plan they've, they're providing, which will be voted on by the commission, by the way, so. Um, that, that leaves the town with around nine percent.
Okay, and. The plan, like, I understand what you're saying, that they have to present a financial plan, but. You know, any financial plan can be, oh, our plan is to raise um sewer use fees by a hundred percent. I don't think that's a reasonable plan.
Right, so they, and and exactly, so part of the reason for having a plan is to lay out what those assumptions are. And the, my understanding is that, and I, and I don't want to get too ahead of myself, because I think Michelle Gore should talk about this, and also. Mr. Becker's been involved in others, but they were doing a benchmarking study of rates. And the, you know, the the rate assumptions, the rate increase assumptions that they put in that plan. Should serve as a, um. I think that should be helpful for the commission, because the commission has always raised rates every year based on. They haven't had a long-term view, you know, they've never had a long-term plan, they've always just done a one-year look when they've. Set their rates, so now what they're going to have is a ten-year plan, uh, which is gonna. You know, it's just gonna lay out the future capital projects, the future debt service, so you shouldn't have these, you know, these swings where it's eight percent one year and two percent another year. Will enable them to plan on a long-term basis and keep some steadiness in the rates they have. So it's actually, um, uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to them presenting it to the board. We did see a draft, they did an excellent job putting it together. They uh benchmarked against. Um, some other communities and, including New Haven that have have done these sorts of plans. And, you know, we've been, this board's been asking for something like this for several years, so this is all coming together, and we will get a. A look at it in in our March regular meeting.
Okay, because I, I, the reason I'm concerned about it only because, um, most recently, and this. This was held in the public forum at the Board of Education, where Mr. Becker had gone to. The Board of Educate, Mr. Peterson and and to the administration. And asked them to reduce the amount of their budget that they were gonna put forth and vote on. And one of his solutions for that was to take out operating expenses. and say the town would pay for them with debt. Now, to me personally, that's not a way to budget. It's not a way to budget where you would normally and have always funded those things. And I, I talked to Mr. Peterson about it, and he told me to watch the meeting, and I did. Where these expenses that Mr. Becker was putting forth on behalf of the administration, saying that we would bond for them in order for them to lower their, their, their proposed budget increase, is taking the things that you normally do and paying for them with bonds that could go various lengths, but certainly more than the year that it's being paid for, is improper budgeting. And it raises the point to me of, I don't, I'm getting concerned about giving capacity, even though I know we have things coming down the path. We all know that.
Yeah, so if, if that, if there are, and, and I'm not familiar with, with the details of, of any of what you're discussing.
I would suggest you look into that.
No, I, let me, and let me just, as you know, part of this policy sets out criteria for what you can capitalize. And we've actually raised that threshold this year. So the Board of Ed would need to meet the threshold in the policy. So it would have to be, you know, it would have to meet the threshold in terms of dollar amount, in terms of useful life, and all the other things. So I'll just say that. And it would have to be in the capital plan, which is going to reduce, you know, obviously, the capacity to do, the Board of Ed's capacity to do other things. So we are going to get that update in two weeks or so, and we'll see what that is. And if there are, you know, I'm not, there may be some items that they were going to pay for out of their operating budget, and now they want to bond. But if they don't meet the criteria, then they're not going to be able to do that. So I don't know what else to say.
Well, they're not doing it, because they're saying we're staying with our normal plan of what we bond for and what we expense on a yearly basis out of our normal budget, which they said has been the same process for like the last 20 years. So I just don't want to get into a situation where we all of a sudden start bonding to bring down our mill rate.
Well, I, I agree with you. I mean, as you know, I was one of the loudest voices when we, you know, when certain people wanted to start rebonding paving. I don't agree with that. I think it's hard to get things in the budget, and if you've got them there, you know, bonding is not a solution to that and costs us, you know, usually more in the long run. So I think we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But, you know, this policy, you know, we did increase the threshold for bonding. And this concept of net debt, in my mind, is in no way trying to create capacity for the town. It's just trying to, you know, measure things consistently with how they actually hit the general fund budget.
Do you have any sense of how much this will increase the borrowing capacity of the town on a dollar basis?
We can ask for the calculation. But honestly, the idea here wasn't to increase the capacity. It was to make sure that we could stay below the capacity. You know, as you know, we, we gave guidance back to the administration that they, you know, bumping up against 10% was not acceptable. So they have gone back, they've made changes. We got an update last meeting, and we'll get another one in, in March. Mr. Curly?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the point that you made at the start of this discussion, Madam Chair, that all of the capital information that's been prepared, probably for the last year or more, actually. I think more than a year, because I think it goes back to our previous CFO under the prior administration, was to put the, exclude the WPCA from the calculation. So I looked at these changes as a way to make the language consistent with what's already been done. And yeah, I did double-check the numbers while we were, while you were talking there. And the last plan was 8.95% at, at the max, and that was out in 2033. So I, I don't think, I don't think there's any expectation that this is creating additional capacity. I think it's just bringing the language in line with practice.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, just one other thing I'll say for myself. You know, we, we can talk about these percentages as they relate to the policy, but the bottom line is the real impact of that percentage is what it does to the mill rate. So that's, you know, that's got some sensitivity to it. And, yeah, I'm sure there's going to be continued focus on the capital plan to make sure that we're doing things in a responsible way that does not overly burden the taxpayer or cause spikes in any given year. I know we all have an interest in that. Ms. Gero?
Just to reiterate also, I certainly didn't think we were increasing the capacity. That wasn't the purpose, I think, for the language that we added, that wasn't the plan. And I do think, just to say again, with the presentation we saw for the WPCA, I thought they did an amazing job laying out a plan, a lot of detail we haven't seen. I loved the strategy, her whole presentation was, you know, getting information from any of the benchmarks. I thought she did a very thorough job. I'm looking forward to seeing it again, because I know that was a very preliminary, and we were lucky to get walk-through on that. They, they did us a, you know, a favor kind of coming in and showing us what they were doing, but they certainly seemed to have a very robust plan that they were laying out. So I was very happy to see that. And, you know, she seemed to be confident that they could cover that. And I certainly didn't see any plan to be jacking up the rates. That was never mentioned, or moving any operating costs to the town from the WPCA for sure.
All right, I would suggest people watch that Board of.
Yeah, I'm not, I didn't see what you're talking about, but it certainly wasn't, it didn't come up as part of the WPCA stuff we saw. I know you're saying something totally different, and I, you know. I'm just saying, we didn't see that in what we looked at.
Yeah, there was, just agree. There's no motivation in any of this to try and create capacity so we can bond things that shouldn't be bonded at all.
We're actually, I think, making it, we're taking it to 150.
Right.
From 100, which should make it harder, you know, make the justification, you know, stronger.
No, I understand. I mean, I, I was there for that meeting, and I will say, I was very in favor of raising the number, because it hadn't been raised because of the things people were able to squeeze up to like $101,000 with inflationary prices that we've been getting in. Things you've never think could qualify were now qualified, so.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate the committee doing that, very much so. So, and I appreciate all the work you guys have put into this.
Thank you. We are going to try to meet one more time before the March meeting, just so we can take a deeper dive than we might be able to do in a regular meeting. But again, I look forward to bringing that to the full board. Any other questions on the policy? Okay. All right, well, in that case, we can take it to a vote. All in favor of approving the revised policy on debt issuance that is included in the meeting backup? Please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. That looks unanimous, 9-0. All right. Again, thanks, everyone. And Mr. Harris, if I could make the same request on finalizing this document and putting the new version on the website, and also to our recording secretary to have the final version in the minutes, as well as we'll get it distributed to the board. All right, so with that, we can move to item eight, which is to hear, consider, and act on any communications. Mr. Harris, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay, all right, I do not. Okay, so we'll move to the last item, which is, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Curly seconded by Mr. Matola, all in favor. All right, see everybody in a couple of weeks in March. Good night.
All right, thank you, thank you.